Don't yell at me. I can't take that tonight.
There's quite in the campen up there. Yeah. Car with its hood up. Probably enough grocery carts to open a store.
We're ready to start?
On that property.
Okay, we're ready to start this meeting. The audience would please quiet down. Thank you. Call this meeting to order. This is the 15th of February meeting of the Concord Planning Board. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Chair Foss?
Here.
Counselor Champlin?
Present.
Member Fox?
Here.
Member Hicks?
Here.
Member Savage?
Here.
Member Santa Cruz?
Here.
Member Rosenberg?
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the January 18th minutes.
Move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. To overview the agenda briefly, item 7C and 7F, which are respectively, SMRT Architects and Engineers on behalf of the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services requesting a non-binding review under RSA 67454 for a new two-story structure for a forensic psychiatric hospital at 36 Clinton Street. The applicant has requested to postpone that hearing to the March 15th Planning Board meeting. And 7F, which is Michael Durant on behalf of AR?
Sorry, I think I missed a typo there. It's 7H, I apologize.
Oh, okay, sorry. 7H, which is Hayner &amp; Swanson LLC on behalf of Brady Sullivan Properties LLC requesting major site plan and conditional use permit approval for converting existing buildings into an 80-unit multifamily complex at 11 Stickney Avenue. The applicant has requested to postpone that hearing to the March 15th Planning Board meeting also. So if you are here for either of those items, they will not be addressed this evening. I need a motion to postpone those two hearings to the March 15th meeting. Motion. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. We have three items for determination of completeness. 150 Fisherville Road, I need a motion to determine the application complete, that it is not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for March 15th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. 5B is Amiskeak Granite Engineering on behalf of Amiskeak Realty requesting major site plan approval for construction of a 13,822-square-foot building addition, a new 5,000-square-foot building, and two conditional use permits for disturbances to wetland buffers and the Shoreland Protection District at 138 Hall Street in the Industrial District. I need a motion to determine this application complete, determine that it is a development of regional impact, and set the hearing for March 15th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have Jeff Lewis on behalf of the City of Concord and United Therapeutics requesting major site plan approval for construction of an approximately 35,000-square-foot aircraft hangar and a conditional use permit to allow a 20-foot-wide driveway where a 24-foot-wide driveway is otherwise required at 65 Regional Drive in the Industrial District. I need a motion to determine this application complete, determine that it is a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for March 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Our next item is design review. We have items 6A through 6E by consent unless anyone wishes to pull one of those from the consent calendar. Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve those design review items subject to ADR stipulations. Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Moving on to public hearings. The first one is Richard Bartlett &amp; Associates on behalf of Nancy Mallett and Sandra Longfellow requesting minor subdivision/division approval for the purpose of a lot line adjustment between 11 Perkins and 13 to 15 Perkins Street in the Neighborhood Residential District. Do we have a staff report?
Staff recommends that, yes, we do, but first we recommend that it be determined complete and not a development of regional impact and that we open the public hearing.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, then I will open the public hearing on item 7A.
It was pretty straightforward, so we can just let Mr. Bartlett get...
We will let Mr. Bartlett proceed.
Mr. Bartlett, but it's Mr. Sargent.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You know what?
I'm reading Richard Bartlett.
Yeah. I worked for Dick Bartlett for 18 years. I've owned the business for 22, and still everybody calls me Mr. Bartlett, so that's fine.
Like, I don't know who you are, right?
Like, we haven't seen you before.
Yeah. But, good evening. My name is Mark Sargent, and I am with the firm of Richard Bartlett &amp; Associates, and I'm here tonight representing Nancy Mallett and Sandra Longfellow and April Woodbury. The property before the board this evening, there's two of them. The Mallett property is located at 11 Perkins Street, has an area of .14 acres with 65.77 feet of frontage on Perkins Street, and it has a single-family home on it. The Longfellow-Woodbury property is at 1315 Perkins Street, has an area of .12 acres with 71 feet of frontage, and has a residential duplex on the property. Both properties sit within the neighborhood residential zoning district. So the proposal before the board this evening is to do a lot line adjustment. The current lot line, which I think you can see, is kind of runs very odd to Perkins Street. It cuts very close to the building at 1315. So what they'd like to do is adjust that so it makes it more perpendicular to the street. And what the result is, we'll annex 221 square feet of 11 Perkins to 13 and 15, and annex 110 square feet of 13 and 15 to 11 Perkins, resulting in 11 gaining 6.53 feet of frontage. So both lots are existing non-conforming lots, so we were required to go to the zoning board, which we did in December, and we received a variance for each lot for substandard frontage in substandard area. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Are there any questions from the audience regarding this application? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
So you gotta open the report, so you can do...
Okay, sorry.
So I'll make a motion to grant the waivers.
Hold on here.
Second.
Okay. Got to find... God. Okay. So...
Close the public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to grant two waivers from the subdivision regulations. Section 12.08 (3) regarding existing topography, and section 12.08 (4) regarding soil data.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now need a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at 11 and 13 to 15 Perkins Street, subject to eight precedent conditions and no subsequent conditions.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Okay. Our next item, 7B, is Liberty Woods LLC requesting a conditional use permit for disturbance of a wetland buffer at 58 Reserve Place in the Open Space Residential District. Do we have a staff report?
Yep. So staff does recommend this be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and that we open the public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing on Liberty Woods. Is there someone here?
Do you have to do the determination? Yeah, you have to make the determination.
I'll move the determination of completeness.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
We do have a staff update.
Okay.
So the applicant was unfortunately not able to make it tonight. It is a pretty straightforward project, so I recommended that it still go forward tonight, but if you have questions, it can be postponed until next month. But it's about 1,200 square feet of wetland buffer impacts. It's an existing lot of record that was approved in 2005 by the board with a driveway through the wetland buffer. So the way the lot was approved, the constraint was put in place for them. So they're just trying to put a driveway in for a new single-family home, and it requires for grading at the back portion of the property, some impacts as well. It went before the Conservation Commission last week, and the commission did not have any concerns and recommended moving forward with the issuance of the CUP.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? No, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns about this application from the audience? If not, I will close the public hearing and request a motion to grant conditional use permit approval in accordance with Article 28-4-3 (D) to allow for disturbance of wetland buffers associated with the construction of a driveway and single-family residence subject to the precedent and subsequent conditions. There are two precedent conditions and three subsequent conditions.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, okay. So, item 7C has been postponed, so we will move to item 7D. And presumably, Mr. Sargent has not left us entirely. This item regards Richard D. Bartlett &amp; Associates on behalf of Swenson Granite Company LLC and Shawn Anderson requesting a minor subdivision approval for the purpose of a lot line adjustment between 9 to 11 Lake Street and 369 North State Street in the Open Space Residential District.
So staff does recommend this be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and that we open the public hearing.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and I will open the public hearing.
Want to give an update?
Just, it's a... Hi, I'm Alec.
Welcome, Alec.
Lot line adjustment between the Swenson Granite lot and 9 and 11 Lake Street out in the back. They went for zoning for variance for lot frontage. We support.
It's pretty straightforward.
Brutal.
Have I not introduced Alec yet?
No.
Our newest planner, Alec.
Welcome.
They are requesting three conditional use permits.
Or, he means waivers.
Sorry. They, waivers, my apologies. They have, they did request two conditional use, two waivers. We are in support of the first, and then instead of granting approval for all of the existing conditions, we just, we grant conditions, existing topography, classification of soils, and the existing natural features, instead of the entire subset of existing conditions. Sorry.
Okay.
Since I'm aware that there is a lot of neighborhood concern about the subdivision, could the staff just outline what the authority of the planning board is regarding this?
Sure. This is just a lot line adjustment. It has just to do with changing the boundaries of the line. It does nothing else to do with any of the uses or conditions on the site. We're strictly looking at the lot line adjustment. If and when they come back for some other, you know, use-related approvals, the city will look at that. But for right now, it's simply, it's a very straightforward, very simple lot line adjustment.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sargent.
All right. Good evening again. It's Mark Sargent, and joining me this evening is Ari Pollack and the applicant Shawn Anderson. And so I'm here representing both parties, Swenson Granite and Shawn Anderson. The site that we're speaking of this evening, the Anderson property, is 9 to 11 Lake Street, has 65.9 feet of frontage on Lake Street, an existing area of 12.41 acres. The Swenson Granite Company, that I'm sure everybody's familiar with, is located at 369 North State Street, has frontage on North State Street, an area of 187.27 acres. The lot line adjustment before the board this evening is to annex 10.02 acres of the Anderson property to the Swenson property. That leaves the Anderson property with 2.39 acres, and increases the Swenson property to 197.29 acres. There are no changes in the frontage. We did get a variance from the zoning board at the beginning of the month here. The Anderson lot is considered a non-conforming lot because it has less than the 80 feet of frontage required. So, as I mentioned earlier this month, we did get a permit to allow the subdivision to come to the planning board with the substandard frontage. As Alex mentioned, we are seeking a couple waivers. So we're seeking waivers to sections 12.07, which is the wetland delineation, 12.08, 3, 4, and 5 pertaining to topography soils and natural features. We did do a complete survey of the Anderson property, and we didn't do a complete survey of the Swenson property. We did a sufficient amount of topography and wetlands on the Anderson property show that it is a buildable lot and has the usable area. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, one last thing, as Heather did mention. At the zoning board meeting, you know, we had a lot of neighbors come up concerned about what is going to happen to the property, and I'm privy to what is going on with the property. And, you know, this is simply just a lot line adjustment, and any further action on this property would require further planning board approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just add, I'm here as counsel for Mr. Anderson. I do not represent Swenson. I'm here really because of the conversation that occurred at the zoning board, and again, trying, consistent with what Heather had shared as the city planner, try to focus the board on the lot line adjustment. Mr. Anderson certainly is not part of any plan to use or permit activities on the area to be conveyed to Swenson. He doesn't know what their plans are. His property is improved with the two-family residence. He lives in one of them, and his property and his use of his property is not changed by this adjustment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there folks in the audience who wish to comment or ask questions on this proposal? Okay. Sir? You need to come forward to the table and sign in. Is there a sign-in place there?
Sit. Is that the idea? Stand? How do you want to do it?
You can sit. The mic will probably pick you up better if you sit.
I just have really a question. I just wanted to get...
Okay. Could we have your name, please?
Oh, sure. It's David Gallagher.
Thank you.
And my wife and I live at 13 Lake Street, which is adjacent to the property that we're talking about in question here. I just wanted to just have you reaffirm for me that since there doesn't seem to be any idea as to what the context of that land is going to be used for, that this is something that would be taken up at a lady planning event?
Correct.
So that we, should there be any question as to what it is they're planning on doing, that we could at that point in time, again, come back in a public hearing in order to be able to ascertain just exactly what's happening?
Correct.
And so forth. That's basically all I had.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could sign in...
There's no sheets, sir.
Somewhere down there.
It's on the lower table. Lower table, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Right behind you, if you could sign in. Thank you.
Was there someone else that wished to speak? I thought there was a hand in the back at one point. Sir?
See if that comes through. If this does not come through, I printed out hard copies. I was not sure as to the number of people on this council. I assumed it would be an odd number. I got seven, so I can always get the hard copies.
I can always get the hard copies and my folks could share, that's all right with you. I'm trying.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this about the lot line adjustment?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll go get hard copies. But I'm going to go back. My name is Trevor Barry, I'm one of the aforementioned concerned neighbors. Yet, when I received the letter, I wasn't sure as to what the scope would be for this committee meeting. So as I learned from the zoning committee, there seems to be a specific, you know, better word, angle that the committee, you know, has to kind of put blinders on and make the decision based only around that. So without any more information, I stuck to City of Concord master plan. If I'm not mistaken, that's the scope of this committee. Am I correct in that?
No.
No, okay. So.
The master plan really pertains to when, when the board is doing master planning activities. So when they're looking at a particular application that relates to the site plan or subdivision regulations, they have to stick to the regulations of the site plan or subdivision regulations. So for instance, they couldn't say, our master plan supports green space, so we're going to deny this application, or whatever. So, no, they can't do that, that's not within the purview of the board. They have to follow, if, if an application satisfies the requirements of the regulations, then, you know, there's, you have to have a basis on which to deny it that is within the regulations.
Okay. I don't want to waste your time. My plan was to go through the City of Concord, the, the city's master plan, address all the points where it seems to contradict.
So yeah, that would not be appropriate in this venue.
Okay. All right. Before I step down, I just want to make sure there's nothing else that would be relevant. I mean, I, I believe this goes back to Mr. Gallagher's question, is there a proper renew to discuss those concerns?
So if they come back with an application for a use on the property, then we will have another planning board, another public hearing for that site plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience regarding this application?
Actually, I have a question. So the, is this the point at which the sale is approved? I, I'm such a layman when it comes to this stuff.
So the city doesn't oversee private transactions between residents?
Yep.
So that has nothing to do with the approval for the lot line adjustment? It doesn't, is not relevant?
Yes.
Who owns the property?
This is strictly about the fact that Mr. Anderson, by subdividing his property, has created a new lot, his lot, the one he lives on. And that lot has a non-conforming, this is, this is what the variances were about. This is a new lot with new boundaries, and that's really what this is about. Has nothing to do with the back lot, has everything to do with the lot that he continues to live on.
Okay. I guess one last question. Something that came up in the master plan quite a bit was the importance of the Pennacook watershed, and it really, really emphasized in several places, should land become available, it would be very, very important to buy up that land. Is that something to be addressed here? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other member of the audience wish to address this item? Okay. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to grant, don't we need to do the waivers? Keep going to the questions. Okay. Okay. The staff recommends granting waivers from the following sections of the subdivision regulations, using the criteria from RSA six seventy-four thirty-six, Roman numeral two, capital N, two, including a waiver from section twelve point oh seven regarding wetland delineation, from section twelve point oh eight parentheses three regarding existing topography, from section twelve point oh eight four regarding identification and classifications of soils, and from section twelve oh eight parentheses five regarding existing natural features. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We now need a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at nine to eleven Lake Street and three hundred and sixty-nine North State Street, subject to eight precedent conditions to be fulfilled within one year and prior to endorsement of the final plan by the planning board chair and clerk.
Motion to approve? Motion? Motion to approve?
Moved, motion and seconded, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Okay. So we will move on to seven E, ROI Irrevocable Trust for Discussion of a Mixed Residential and Commercial Development Consisting of Five New Five-Story Multi-Family Buildings, a Gas Station, Car Wash, Sandwich Shop, and Convenience Store in Phase One, and an Assisted Living Facility, twenty-four Independent Living Town Homes, a Grocery Store, Commercial Building, and Drive-Thru Service in Subsequent Phases for Property off Manchester Street in the Gateway Performance District.
So would you like to give a short update or summary of what we're doing here?
Do I need to?
No, there's no, yes, you can open a public hearing.
Okay. I will open the public hearing. This, just so the board is clear, is an update and will not require any action on our part.
Thank you, it's, it's, it's only action on our part.
I believe we're going to have a staff report before we hear from you folks.
Please do. My apologies.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
We recognize that you're very anxious to share this information.
I thought that had waved off, my apologies.
No. We waved off that you didn't have to determine it complete. So they were before you about a year and a half ago now for this, the CDP. It was tabled at that time, just pending traffic study. We've worked with the applicant over the past about year and a half reviewing traffic studies. NHDOT is about completed with their traffic studies, like, appended those studies to your, to the agenda. But the next step is the FEMA determination, the use of residential, residential use is not allowed within the floodway. They would need a mapped, map revision with FEMA in order to move forward with any approvals for the city. So they would like more information or feedback from the board before investing in the engineering that's required to go before FEMA, so that's why they're here before you tonight, looking for feedback on the layout and sort of a go-ahead to move forward with the next steps. That's all I have.
I don't dare interrupt again, is it my turn?
You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm Ari Pollak of the Gallagher Firm for the ROI Irrevocable Trust, the landowner and the applicant, also the primary developer. I just want to do a few introductions, they're, they're in the back of a crowded room, but with me tonight is Dick Knoll, the owner of the trust and the project land, Alex Velas, his development consultant, Bob DuVall from TF Moran is to my left, and John Levine from HL Turner is somewhere in the back. That's our traffic and floodplain and site engineering team. We also have representatives from some of our mixed-use development partners here. I, I won't dare try to identify them in this crowded room, but trust me, they're here. Our immediate and pending application is actually for a comprehensive development plan to develop seven assembled parcels off Manchester Street and off Black Hill Road in the vicinity of exit thirteen. If you've got the packet I sent around, exhibit one is an overall site layout, it shows the configuration of roads and buildings, and this has frankly been a moving target as time has passed and as interested parties have come and gone from the conversation. A lot of time has passed since the last time we were here, and so that's really why we're here, to provide an overview and an update of what we've been up to. We, we get a lot of questions of why is it taking so long? I hope at the end you'll understand a little bit about why it takes so long. We know you've got a full agenda, we'll keep it brief. To be clear, the comprehensive development plan is coming before subdivision and site plan, it's not instead of. And so once the comprehensive development plan is finished, it's our intention to come forward with a subdivision and particular site plans, either as a group or individual for the uses that we are proposing for the development site. You're probably familiar enough with the general area, I'll mention that it is served by public water, public sewer, it's got frontage on two public roadways, and the site benefits from a signalized intersection at Manchester Street and Black Hill Road, which is just across the bridge from exit thirteen. The site is partially within the floodplain mapped by FEMA, and so, as I mentioned, HL Turner's been engaged to help us with the project. They're engineering what's called a map revision, which is requesting permission from FEMA to fill certain areas within the floodplain so that they can be elevated to be built on with residential uses. Building residential in the floodplain is, is not allowed by ordinance and really anywhere. FEMA's process involves a very detailed engineering exercise, significant modeling. We've, like I said, we've commissioned that work and it's now underway. We anticipate that the FEMA submission will be made sometime in early May, and that at that point, we'll be able to come back, complete, excuse me, our, our comprehensive development plan submission, knowing of course that subdivision and site plan will be behind that. Exit, or I'm sorry, exhibit two in your packet, that's the same map as exhibit one, but it has some handwriting on it in terms of what uses will be going where. Phase one of the program, and again, it's, it's been a moving target, so forgive me if it's different than your, your memory from our last visit, it still incorporates multifamily rental housing buildings along the river. It now has a senior living component also along the river and to the southern part of the state, I'm sorry, it's the southern part of the site, and a convenience sandwich gas station concept along Manchester Street, and that's actually between Manchester Street and Black Hill Road. All of these uses are permitted in the Gateway District, which is where the property is located, and the uses that I've described are all under either purchase agreement or lease agreement for development when the approvals can be obtained. I've included some basic elevations and layouts as exhibits three, four, and five. These are also moving targets, so please understand that these are concepts that can change. The gas convenience and market is to be developed by the Granite State Convenience Group, which we know locally as the Common Man. Obviously, they've got a fantastic statewide reputation for well-managed, clean, professional sites. The multifamily piece is under agreement with Ron Dupont, you'll be familiar with his Red Oak Projects in Concord, Manchester, and other parts of New Hampshire, and again, very well managed and maintained. The senior housing piece is to be developed by Ducal Development, they're a proven senior living operator, and they're actually going to be proposing three types of residences that you can see laid out on that exhibit five. Again, this is really just conceptual food for thought tonight, and we're not even able to ask for a, a motion on the conditional use permit. But we thought we'd give you a taste of what this looks like. They've got small house models, which are the clusters to the left side of the page. The clusters have bedroom with communal kitchen dining and living space with amenities and patios. And then we've got an apartment building, congregate living style with riverfront views and meal programming and social activities. The third style is one-story cottages with two-bedroom floor plans and private garages. And like I said, there's, there's more uses to come in phase two. The comprehensive development plan will contemplate both phases so that you get a good holistic view of what the site at full buildout will look like. And again, the second phase is programmed to include a riverfront restaurant, a medical office building, a bank pad, and an unspecified retail opportunity. We've had a healthy amount of interest, but we're still marketing some of these opportunities. The development program also includes dedication of a right-of-way for construction of a segment of the so-called Greenway Trail. I, I know you're all familiar with that term and what that means, and essentially, the dedication will push the city's longstanding efforts forward to assemble and realize that recreational access to the front, to the riverfront, and it's, it's as much of an amenity for us as it is for the city. We all recognize that trails require an assemblage of parts, and a trail that has gaps in it isn't a trail, it's a bunch of trails with a lot of holes. And so we're going to do our part to make that assemblage a reality. Lastly, we've worked with staff to scope and conduct a very detailed traffic impact analysis. I, I want to ask Bob to talk about that very briefly. I don't want to steal his thunder, but there's a lot going on down there. You've got a city road, you've got a state road, and you've got an internet, an interstate exit all in close proximity, and what that means is complicated. And so we took time to do a detailed traffic analysis. We received comments from the city's peer review group, VHB. We responded to that group, peer review. We got another peer review, we responded to that. Everything got packaged up again, sent over to DOT. We got their take on it, we responded to that. Their comments were preliminary, but preliminary enough or comprehensive enough, I guess I should say, to give them comfort that we could come back and keep talking with you and move things forward. Again, it's, it's taking a long time, and we recognize updates are important. So with your permission, I'd ask Bob to quickly summarize his work and some of the back and forth and where that leaves us.
Thank you, Ari. So my name is Bob DuVall from TF Moran, and we, we actually started this traffic study at the beginning of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. And then we, as Ari said, we went through a series of reviews culminating finally with acceptance of the traffic study by the city's consultant in August. And then, at that point, it was passed on to the DOT for their review, and as Ari pointed out, the DOT has given us an initial review. It appears their comments are minor, and they did inform us that they think this project is permissible, they just are going through their final comments. Hopefully, we'll get it early in twenty twenty-three, and then we'll be ready to move ahead with a, with a CDP, once the flood study is, is, is ready, is submitted actually, is a requirement. And that's, that's happening according to the schedule that Ari pointed out. I have here a few slides just to summarize the traffic briefly. This is just the total trips associated with the project. As Ari pointed out, phase one is a subset of the uses, the gas convenience, bank, and residential components. And that's generating, if you look on the extreme right-hand column, that's generating that column there, that's generated two hundred and seventeen trips in the AM peak hour, one hundred and ninety in the PM peak hour, and two seventy-nine trips in the Saturday peak hour. And that's the entirety of phase one. The numbers just to the left of that are the total trips, but since the convenience gas and the bank have a significant pass-by component, the actual new trips on the roadway are reduced, and that's what's represented in that final column. The next table shows the corresponding numbers for AM PM Saturday of two forty-six, two twenty-three, two fourteen, new trips on the roadway. And finally, the last table in blue at the bottom says that the full buildout of the project is three hundred and thirty new trips, three hundred and ninety-five in the PM, and four hundred and seventeen on the Saturday. The roadway network there, as Ari pointed out, is complex, but it's also robust, and that means it can handle quite a bit of traffic, in, in addition to what's already on the that means it can handle quite a bit of traffic, in addition to what's already on the roadway in that location. And we have here a slide that shows the proposed improvements that this project would be making to the roadway network. Number one certainly is the elimination of driveways along Manchester Street. So we're eliminating one full-access driveway, there are five now, eliminating one full-access driveway, converting three driveways to restricted movement. One would be right-in, right-out, left-in, but no left-out. That's at the gas convenience. And then two right-in, right-out only driveways on Manchester Street. So they're eliminating driveways, restricting movements at driveways, so there's going to be a lot less friction associated with driveways interacting with, through traffic on the roadway. Second, widen Black Hill approach to Manchester Street to create a double-left turn, and I've got a little slide of that one here too, to show you what that's going to look like. We're actually widening the road to the right to create a new through-right lane to make room for a double-left turn lane, which will accommodate the expected higher volume of left-turning traffic coming out of Black Hill Road at that intersection. Improvement number three, we had talked about making some interim improvements or helping the city with their project to make improvements to the old Turnpike roadside of Manchester Street, but now that improvement, which is creating double-lefts and double-rights, is now part of state project one-three-seven-four-two. So that, and our traffic study did analyze those improvements and shows that it makes a substantial improvement in that regard at the intersection. It's interesting to point out that those improvements that are needed have nothing to do with the traffic to this development. This development, people would be coming, let's say, eastbound people would be making a right-in and a left-out of Black Hill Road, or into the site driveways. People making lefts onto Old Turnpike and rights off of Old Turnpike, of course, would be other traffic, and it's really not affected by this development. But that improvement does free up additional green time that can be shared with the through road and the new approach on Black Hill. Improvement number four is looking at other modes and making improvements to bus-ped-bike traffic, would be to construct a bus pull-off at Manchester Street along that Spine Road, and if I go back to that plan, that little bus pull-off is right here, if you can see my mouse. So that will help encourage transit traffic. And then on, I'm going to skip over five and six, but on seven, it's another bus-ped-bike improvement, connecting the sidewalk on Black Hill underpass to the city park on the north side of Manchester Street, so that it's easier for pedestrians to cross Manchester Street without having to push a ped button and stop traffic on Manchester Street. And the last improvement Ari has already spoken about, that's to add a stone-dust riverwalk along the property frontage, along the river, for its entire developed portion. And that would be constructed, as Ari said, to help extend a substantial length of that riverfront trail. And this is thousands of feet here, between the left and the right. So it's a substantial improvement to the city's trail network. And lastly, at each, at the end of each phase, there would be timing adjustments to area signals depending on traffic volumes at that time. As the next phase is built, further timing adjustments would be made. So there's actually three stages of improvements to timing, all of which have a beneficial impact on traffic flow. So, I've already shown you the final slide here, which shows the improvements on Black Hill, and if you have any questions about traffic, I'd be happy to answer.
So I promised you the executive summary, and I probably broke that promise. That's a mouthful, I realize. We're really just looking for any feedback the board wants to offer on the concepts as they sit now. We're in the midst of this floodplain engineering, it's a big endeavor, and we'll be back when we can submit and propose a complete CDP, but better to know now if there are things that are of concern or things that are of excitement.
Quick question, thank you, Mr. Pollack. How many housing units total will this generate for the city?
The multifamily is, yeah, you're right. The multifamily will be proposed at two-hundred-and-sixty-six units, and the continuing care community, one-hundred-and-twenty-two units.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very exciting project, at a time when we desperately need more housing. I'm eagerly anticipating you're adding housing units to the city. Couple of questions. One is, if I understand the traffic study correctly, pretty much anybody who wants to make a left and go west on Manchester Street is going to have to go out through Blackwater Road, right?
That is correct.
That's it, because there are no, you know, all the other, all the other access to Manchester Street require a right-hand turn.
Yes.
All right. Second is, what, I have three questions. So the second one is, if I may.
Thanks.
The second one is, are you doing any mitigation relative to, you know, the exposure on the floodplain? Any design features or anything of that nature? I'm married to someone who grew up with a levee keeping one of the local rivers off of her family's property, so I'm wondering, you know, are there any mitigation factors in either the design or the layout?
So, yeah, I mean, number one, we're not building residences in it, so that's important to note. And that alone requires the map revision and grade adjustments, which are a significant undertaking. The other thing that I know is in conversation, and a lot of this is preliminary because that floodplain engineering is still underway, is structural fortification for some of the buildings, because it was in the floodplain area, even if it's elevated, and even if it's compacted.
Great, thank you.
Third question, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Third question is, and this is just, and I apologize for not knowing this, the parking that is adjacent to the residential units, particularly the multifamily units, is that all required, that number of spaces required by our codes? Because given that you have parking under the building, there's just an awful lot of asphalt space there. And it struck me, you know, a couple of nights ago when I was looking at the Plan One that you put up here.
So actually, the parking that's shown was pursuant to a shared parking analysis. So if you totaled up the parking and you totaled up the city-required parking, it's a little bit less that we're providing than the city required by zoning, based on the shared parking analysis.
Right. You know, it would be great if there was more green, from my perspective, there was more green space integrated into that. There's an awful lot of asphalt, and we all know that issues around asphalt, you know, heat retention, lack of permeability, runoff, and so on and so forth, particularly since this project is so, so close to the river.
It's certainly something for us to keep an eye on as we're able to identify more uses and we can take more advantage of shared-use parking. One of the issues that we confront, of course, is with phased project. We're not sure who those folks will be and what their parking requirement will be, and so, it does look like a lot, we'd love to build less and maintain less, and we've put as much of it under the buildings as we really realistically can, but it's a good, it's a good thing for us to have in mind as more of the users are identified.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, yes.
I kind of have a little bit of a question. You have a lot of right-in, rights-out on Manchester Street that have, a roadway that has no median with a dual yes-left turn lane. And if the CVS on East Side Drive is any indication, right-out, right-in, right-out without a median, don't work very well. People are still going to make lefts out, people are still going to make lefts in, and I have concern because that becomes more of a safety issue. So if that's something that, in your next presentation, you're going to have a little bit more discussion, how you feel confident that your design is going to minimize or eliminate those illegal movements?
That was actually a comment of the city's reviewer as well. So we took special pains to make more pronounced median barriers to illegal turns in and out. But, you know, certainly, and this is, at this point, still master plan stage, when we get to final design, that will be something we look at closely.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, one thing is, it's hard at this scale plan to kind of see wetland and riverfront buffers and how you fit within those on this plan?
Right. We're able to comply with the Shoreland Act with the exception of the trail.
Right.
And we're frankly going to be asking for the city's support when we go hand-in-hand to DES and explain why that is a necessary encumbrance in the first hundred-and-fifty feet of the waterfront buffer. There are some wetland impacts to the rear of the site, they are shown on here, but at that scale, you can't appreciate them. And frankly, those are low-function wetlands in the back, and it's all, again, part of this floodplain analysis as well.
I have a question. Could you put up the map, I guess, it could be one or two, I don't care which one?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that works. Could you indicate, like, where on that map you would need to do the terrain alteration? Kind of how much terrain alteration is involved here?
For the floodplain.
For the floodplain.
Yeah. Just circle the center with your laser thing.
Jose.
Jose, you're about to get sniped.
So, the floodplain boundary is, you know, back in here, and, you know, the purpose of the floodplain study is to show that the alterations that are being made within the floodplain zone will not affect the level of the river. So I think implicit in your question is, will the river be affected? And that's the purpose of the floodplain study.
The purpose of my question is, will flood storage be affected when the river is at flood stage?
Right.
Because if it's not being stored there, then it's going downstream. So if there's all, I mean, I'm not DES and I'm not FEMA, but I do have concerns about reducing the area of floodplain.
So that is exactly the purpose of the FEMA analysis of the engineering model. That is their chief concern. I could ask John Levine from H.L. Turner to come up, and he would take an hour explaining how the modeling works, and then you'd really want to hurt me. But suffice it to say that the thrust of the FEMA analysis is, what effect will filling an area that now takes water and flooding be on the rest of the floodplain? And they will analyze his modeling, and if it doesn't match, they won't approve.
Okay. No, I accept that. I just wanted to have a sense of how much area we were talking about here, and how, what, what's the extent of elevation change that you're going for?
It's hard to explain in words, and unfortunately, all I have is this plan view, but if you were to look at, you know, how we've designed that Spine Road, it's actually just above the floodplain. In some cases, in most cases, it's a foot or less of change. In some cases, it might be as much as a foot and a half or two feet. In other cases, it's already, the existing ground is already above floodplain. So it's really an incidental effect. The bank also is very steep, once you get past that, that, the break of the top of bank. So you have sort of a thin wedge of dirt that's being put in the floodplain. That zeros out about just beyond that Spine Road down the middle, and then it goes out to a foot or two, no more than that, over some of the area, not all of it, and then goes down the bank and matches in, exactly. So there's this little thin wedge there that John Levine's task is to analyze and model and show its effect on the river, and FEMA will not approve this, as Ari said, unless the effect is negligible.
So, did I understand you that everything west of the Spine Road would require alteration of terrain?
Well, the terrain will be altered up and down. The ground is high in the large commercial building in the, on the left side of the plan. That's above floodplain, and that will be brought down, actually. Then the center section is more or less on floodplain, and then as you move to the right, it dips about where that cul-de-sac is, and then rises gently as you move farther south. So, there is alteration of terrain, all of that area will be impacted. In fact, the light green that you can see surrounding the developed area represents more or less the limit of work. So you can see it's very tight to the development itself. And any impacts in there, it's a relatively flat site, gently rolling, and the amount of vertical alteration of terrain is quite modest.
I would just add, it sounds like we're using some, how do you, there we go, it sounds like we're using some mixture of terminology. Alteration of terrain will occur in upland areas, just in terms of grading the site for development.
Right.
But the area where we will ask for permission to fill because it is currently at floodplain or lower is this area here.
Well, we'll let FEMA and DES do their jobs and...
They will.
They will, certainly.
They certainly will.
Put us to task.
That is something I will continue to be interested in.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeff?
I could, just one more. I see a lot of pavement, see a lot of buildings, and talking where we are in terms of next to the river, I don't see a lot of storm water. I know you're still conceptual, but there's no areas that appear to be ponds, and I'm wondering what groundwater is, so, you know, you're looking infiltration, because if you're talking only raising one or two feet and the groundwater is only a foot deep, two feet, you're not going to get the separation required for infiltration. So I'd be kind of interested and concerned to see what you're going to do with all this storm water, given that, you know, water quality that close to the river.
Well, the, in general, and we, you know, we're still very early in the design stage, and we're actually jumping at the bit to get going, so we look forward to, you know, getting this feedback from the board and the completion of the flood study and final comments from DOT, so we can get finalized in this design. But our approach is that it will be underground storage. The soils in that site are very favorable infiltrating group base soils, so they accept good infiltration rates, and the groundwater is quite low. It's, well, at least ten feet down everywhere, and in most cases, it wasn't encountered in borings up to thirty feet deep. So I think this is, you know, a very site, very amenable to underground storage infiltration, which by the way, is probably the most effective method of treating storm water, is by ground infiltration. That's why they have septic tanks, of course.
Anyone else? Okay.
I just have a quick question. That's might be from Bob. So I'm sorry if I missed it, but you're going through Army Corps for the floodplain work, is that right?
It's FEMA.
Okay. I guess I'm not used to that, but did you say that the flood mitigation, sorry, the compensatory flood storage is going to be onsite or offsite?
Compensatory mitigation. Well, the analysis is, is can the floodplain be remapped around fills without affecting the river? That's really what's happening. It's not necessarily a one-for-one compensation.
I see. So you won't be compensating one for one?
Well, no.
I don't know yet.
If it can be remapped?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to comment on or ask questions regarding this app, this information? Okay. Sir?
Hello? My name is Jeff Evans. I live in Concord. I'm on the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee here. And in meetings in the past, we have talked about this project and been excited about some aspects about it. But we've also wondered whether there was any consideration of electric vehicle charging infrastructure as part of this project to complement all of this housing. I'm wondering if the planners of this have thought about that.
That was in my mind as well, but I felt that that was probably part of a later stage of the discussion. But I'll defer to Heather to clarify that.
We haven't gotten to that level of detail. That would be something we'd probably talk about at the major site plan application.
Start with, plant the seed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please don't forget to sign in.
Sure.
Thank you.
Ma'am, somewhere back there? Okay. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Name is Ron Rander. I did come in late, so apologies. I walked in about the time that Byron was asking a question about traffic, one of them. This road is, you said black, is it Black Rock?
Black Hill.
That's just, just a tad above the intersection there across from the Dodge or dealership. I thought, just throwing out for, as an idea, and city planners can certainly back this up, with the I-93 redo, there is tentatively a plan to have two lanes coming down Old Turnpike Road bearing right on Manchester Street to get better access to 93. I have suggested to the engineers, rather than having a major intersection, which presently, and it's very preliminary, they contemplate traffic lights about a turnabout, a turnaround, as we have seen to be merging towards. So, you know, the Black Rock Road isn't that far up, and we might be able to get appropriate access with, with a roundabout there in that area and accomplish many things with one stone. But it would require coordination, of course, with city, with DOT, with McPhailen, help you on McPhailen.
McFarland.
McFarland, engineers, so. And this hopefully will occur prior to, prior to the completion of I-93 widening, but they may be receptive to doing a small component of it earlier on. Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, if you could sign in?
Right there on that table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this app, this information? In that case, I will close the public hearing, and we thank you all for your comments and information. Okay. This brings us to 7F, which is Michael Durant on behalf of ARCK TEJ Realty LLC, requesting conditional use permit approval to allow the use of a gas station at 188 Pleasant Street in the Neighborhood Commercial District.
So staff does recommend this application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
May I have a motion to that effect?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Do we have a staff report?
Yep, we do. I will allow them to give a little bit of the history. They went to the ZBA. Since the gas station use was not used for, for some period of time, they lost their grandfather status for the use, which is why they're coming here for the conditional use permit. They also went to the ZBA and received a number of variances and didn't need other variances. They had various determinations. Won't go into that. So they submitted a conditional use permit. Staff is, is not in support of this application due to the criteria of the conditional use permit. I'm going to assume that you all read the report, and if you have questions about anything that staff wrote in there, feel free to ask. And a number of the standards of review also relative to CIP projects and master plan, pedestrian bicycle master plan information. So with that, I will allow them to present and present their, their, their application.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm still a republic of the Gallagher Firm. This time representing Noria Energy Corporation. With me to my right is Mike Durant. Mike is the construction permitting manager for Noria. And to my left is Heather Montesup of the traffic engineering firm GPI. I'm sure I butchered that, I'm sorry.
Montecup. It's, you did fine.
It's Heather.
It's Heather.
Noria is leasing 188 Pleasant Street from Archtech Realty. They're the land owner, and an authorization letter from the land owner is in the city's files. Noria is before you tonight, as Heather Sargent mentioned, Heather Schenk. One of those days. Late, one of those days.
Heather Bartlet, too.
Let's go with Heather S. and Heather M. As Heather S. mentioned, we are before you tonight for a conditional use permit to reoccupy a convenience store and gas station at 188 Pleasant Street. A full site plan application was deemed unnecessary for this reoccupation because it is our intention to reoccupy and refurbish the prior use and improvements. We are not proposing to reconfigure or redevelop the site. We're asking for permission to operate, which is conditional in this particular zoning district. I wanted to give you a little bit of context. The property is located at the crossroads of Pleasant Street, Warren Street. And if you could maybe back out of that into the, but not terribly important because we have some photos. It's at the crossroads of Pleasant Street, Warren Street, and Fruit Street across from the high school. I'm sure you're all very familiar with that area of the city. The neighborhood, if you will, consists of the high school, the state hospital, now office complex, a multifamily residential property to our rear, another gas and convenience station, catty corner, and an orthodontic office. The property is in the Neighborhood Commercial or CN district, and gasoline filling stations are allowed in the CN district by conditional use permit. The ordinance describes the CN district as, quote, "established to allow a range of residential uses together with small-scale convenience, retail, and personal service uses within a compact area." In other words, it's exactly the situation we have right now around this intersection. The lot at 188 Pleasant consists of .243 acres. That translates to 10,572 square feet. The minimum lot size in the CN district is 10,000 square feet. It's, it's small by all standards. According to the tax card, the parcel was improved in 1981, and until recently was continuously operated as a retail gasoline filling station and a convenience store. The land and improvements are assessed by the city at $447,000. The building and the improvements on the property are assessed at $247,000. The roadways form a peninsula and make an already tight site tighter in terms of setbacks and access. And as a consequence, the existing placement of the building, the existing fueling canopy, and you can look at the photos that yours truly took today, they're making their way around, sorry. The, the existing placement of the building, the fueling canopy, gasoline-related improvements, they're all non-conforming in terms of setbacks, which are, of course, measured from both roadways, lot coverage, fuel island stacking spaces, driveway widths and driveway separation. It's a lot going on on a small site. In September, the zoning board weighed in on aspects of the site that were found to be pre-existing and could continue intact. The building, the fuel canopy, things that are in the setback. Other aspects of the site, like the fueling stacking spaces, the driveway width on each side, driveway separation from intersections and property boundaries on each side, those were the subject of variances that were granted in recognition of the hardship that the lot size, shape, and setbacks all present. There, therefore, after the ZBA session and the dust settled on that, the site is recognized as physically conforming with a combination of legal pre-existing improvements and improvements allowed by variance. And so again, we're here tonight to talk about the use, re-establishing the use of a filling station on the property, which is allowed in the district by conditional use permit. The Concord ordinance spells out the CUP criteria in Article 2894B. There are seven factors to consider in that section of the ordinance. They are discussed in my letter dated January 24th, 2023. That was handed out. The criteria is in bold, and our explanation of compliance is thereafter. This is linked to your agenda on the city's website. I wanted to summarize some of those items and then ask during the presentation for Mike and Heather M. to make some comment. First, the use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as available by conditional use. In this case, the table of uses does confirm that retail sale of gasoline in the CN district is allowed by conditional use permit. Second, the use will comply with standards of the ordinance. To me, that criteria is somewhat ambiguous, but I think that element is supported by the work we did in front of the zoning board, recognizing that some of the improvements are pre-existing and legal conditions, and other of the conditions can be maintained by variances that were granted. In other words, the physical site complies, and if the site were to be refurbished as proposed, it would operate in its historic manner with improved, modernized appearances, professional management, and a significant improvement over the status of the property you see reflected in the photos that I took today. Third, the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety. Again, the site operated in the current location for decades. As an added bonus, Noria has an excellent track record of professional management, good corporate stewardship. You probably are familiar with some of their other stations in New Hampshire. This would be added to their holdings. They've already made a significant investment in underground fuel plumbing upgrades at the site. You may have noticed that there was construction work going on around the fuel island before the timeout was called, the fencing went up, and we came to visit the zoning board and now the planning board. That's a significant investment in fuel safety upgrades over the prior condition, and frankly, they're anxious to finish that work. I hoped I could ask Mike Durant to say a few words here about Noria as a corporate operator.
Thank you, Ari. Good evening to the chair and to the members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to come before you tonight. Just want to speak a little bit on how we operate our stores. Just wanted to let you know that we do operate our stores in a safe, efficient, clean manner. We, we clean up our lots, we keep our stores clean, we keep them inviting, and the folks that come into our stores are our guests. So anybody that that's in that neighborhood coming to our site is going to be our guest. We want to present and greet them and provide a safe, safe and inviting atmosphere for our sites. We hope that you'll allow us to operate the site and with our presence in the neighborhood, help to enhance and improve just the atmosphere of the neighborhood.
So this is, thank you, Mike. This is also a good time to explain that Noria commissioned a traffic study that was scoped with city staff before it was launched. The study was submitted by GPI and then peer reviewed by BHB, as is the city's normal course. And if it pleases the board, I'd ask Heather M. to hit some of the highlights for you.
Thank you. So as mentioned, we did do a traffic study for the project. It was scoped on October 5th, 2022, and then the traffic study was dated November 21st, 2022. It was submitted to the city for review. The traffic, I'll go over it quickly, and if you have any questions, I can elaborate more. But we looked at existing conditions, 2022 conditions. The study area included the signalized intersection of Pleasant Street, Franklin Pierce Highway, Warren Street, North Root Street, and South Root Street, the signalized intersection adjacent to the site, as well as the site driveway on Warren Street and the site driveway on Pleasant Street. We were also asked to qualitatively take a look at Warren Street at Liberty Street, which was also included in the traffic study. Under the existing conditions, we noticed at the signalized intersection that one of the PED push buttons were missing and that only one of the PED crosswalks had the visible countdown. So it was something that we noted in our study. We also looked at public transportation. We collected traffic volumes, daily traffic volumes over a weekday and Saturday. We counted the AM and PM peak periods. We looked at COVID adjustments. We did seasonal adjustments. We looked at collisions at the study area intersections. We got speeds. We also took a look at site distances for future conditions. We looked at 2023 opening year and 2033 opening year plus 10 years. So we looked at traffic growth, any background developments in the area, planned roadway improvements. For the site, we looked at trip generation. This, as mentioned, we are reoccupying what's there today. No expansion. This convenience store is less than 1,700 square feet. There's two pumps with four vehicle fueling positions. That is expected to generate 67 total AM peak hour trips and 80 weekday PM peak hour trips. A site like this takes a lot of traffic from what's already on the roadway today. Over 50% of the traffic is passed by and already in the area. So new trips to the area is 27 AM peak hour trips and 36 PM peak hour trips. Once you distribute that onto the roadways in the area, we're talking about traffic increases in the area as a result of the project of anywhere from one to 11 vehicle trips per hour. So that's about one additional trip every five and a half minutes to one trip an hour, depending on which roadway. We did capacity analysis under existing no build build conditions. Independent of the project, we also did a sensitivity analysis. It was brought to our attention that the Langley Parkway Project Phase Three has been taken off the table. So we did take a look at under 2023 conditions, what some signal timing modifications could do because there are today some movements that are over capacity. We also, under 2033 conditions, did an analysis of what a one lane roundabout would do there, again, independent of the project, but with the new counts. We wanted the city to have that information. As part of the project, in the traffic study, we have also offered to upgrade the pedestrian equipment, fix the pedestrian push button, put in the, the pedestrian countdown signals. As mentioned, VHB did do a peer review of the traffic study. That letter was dated December 16th, 2022. It noted some missing information about uses like... It noted some missing information about uses, lighting, signage, roadway conditions. They wanted some more information on the Warren Street-Liberty Street intersection. They wanted to know the location of our speed study, expand the crash data, get some more sightline information, support some design speeds. And they made some notes about the site plan and just comments about driveways, parking, and truck turns. To that letter, we submitted a response to comment letter. It was dated January 27th, 2023. We did provide that additional information. We obtained additional crash data from the police department. In coordination with the police department, they noted that the department is unaware of any known issues with the signalized intersection. The collision data doesn't show any obvious issues. We confirmed the site distances, the design speeds that we used. Some of the comments that they had about the site plan were, the ZBA did issue approvals about the driveway width, the driveway separation, and the stacking. And as far as the truck turns, the truck turn will be able to clear the canopy as it enters the site or is on the site. And we're also committed to doing any fuel deliveries during off-peak hours. As we've mentioned, the site is small. It doesn't help Noria to have a truck there during peak periods. So we are awaiting VHB's next review letter. That is in their hands. We haven't received anything as of the meeting. There were some staff comments about the traffic study and the project. Most of them related to ped and bicycle safety. Although this project, I mean, yes, children from the school will, and in the neighborhood, will visit the site. So I'm not going to say that there's no pedestrian traffic, but it is a retail motor fuel outlet. So it's not a high generator of ped and bike traffic. But even though that's the case, the applicant has offered to mitigate, to put some mitigation dollars into the signalized intersection with fixing the pedestrian or upgrading, I should say, the pedestrian equipment with proper push buttons and the countdown signals. The driveways, they are wide. We need those to get the fuel truck in and out of the site. So, you know, the variance was issued for that. And another thing was, I did notice after we submitted our letter that the crashes that we looked at were when the store was closed. We had reached out to the, even before receiving staff comments, we reached out to the police department about what the crashes were at the driveways while the facility was open from 2017 to 2019. So three full years of data. And we found that there were no collisions at the Warren Street driveway, and one collision was found at the Pleasant Street. It was a rear end because a car was following along too closely. So that's the summary of our traffic study. Again, I can go into more details on anything if you have any questions at the end of the presentation.
Just to go back to, we certainly can take a break if there are questions now, but my intention was to go back to the letter addressing the conditional use criteria in the ordinance and then make our presentation complete. The fourth item in the ordinance and fourth addressed in the letter is whether the use is going to be compatible with the neighborhood and the adjoining uses. And again, this neighborhood is predominantly commercial. And sure enough, there's another gas and convenience across the intersection. Also, on this point of compatibility, the owner of the multifamily property to our rear, to our east, 131 Warren Street, he wrote a letter to this board dated February 4th, 2023, also in your packets and part of my handouts, a single sheet letter. His letter, he, Mr. Every, Robert Every, attended the zoning board hearing and actually opposed our applications at the zoning board. He was, I was there, he was a passionate speaker. After the meeting, he had an opportunity to meet with some of the folks from Noria, learned about their corporate policies. And he wrote this letter in support of reoccupation of the site as a better option than allowing it to continue as a vacant property, which of course is what it is today. And to be clear, nobody from Noria forced Mr. Every to write his letter. His opinions are his own. They speak for themselves. They're in your packet. I actually don't even know if he's here tonight. Fifth, the use will not have an adverse effect on highway or pedestrian safety. Again, you heard from Heather that we conducted a thorough traffic safety study. Pedestrian safety was an important part of that inquiry. And as she has already explained, the station is not necessarily a large generator of pedestrian traffic, but pedestrian traffic relating to the school and surrounding uses certainly needs to navigate our site safely. And given the walking patterns, the crosswalk function has to be proper. And we've found them in poor condition or lacking. And we're proposing those improvements as off-site improvements for the sake of pedestrian safety. Sixth, the use will not have an adverse effect on the natural, environmental, or historic resources of the city. In this case, resuming gas service is the historic use. And upgrading the subsurface plumbing and piping all with DES approvals will help ensure that there are no adverse impacts from this station as it may operate in the future. The last item in the ordinance and in the letter, the use will be adequately served by public utilities and community facilities. Again, the community services would, we would think they would be similar to the prior experiences, none of which we understood to be excessive. The gasoline station, customers are expected to arrive in their own vehicles and not be a burden on public transportation. And if anything, we can hope that better and more active daily management and site stewardship will reduce any existing demand for fire safety, EMS, and so forth. So in summary, the choice tonight that we're asking you to make is between reopening a historic service station for the historic use or nothing, leaving it vacant as it is now. There are other uses that might be made of this site in the CN District. There certainly are other permitted uses in your ordinance, but none of them are now proposed, and all of them would face the same challenges of this tight site. We understand that conditional use permits are inherently subjective. We understand that the staff has concerns about this reoccupation and that opinions can and do differ. But we think reopening this site for a fifth decade of operation with the same location, the same configuration, with improved, with an improved and reputable operator who's already invested in underground plumbing and fueling equipment will deliver a refurbished and more attractive building and site and offers daily professional management that really puts us over the top in terms of the discretion we're asking you to exercise. So with that, I think, I think we rest. We rest, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Jeff, I can see you just champing.
I have one of Heather. What site improvements are we allowed to discuss? If this is conditional use, is this open to suggestions for improvements on site? If they're talking about only improving the building, canopy, anything else stays?
I think you can make whatever suggestions you think are appropriate.
So I went out and visited the site the other day, spent an hour out there, or give or say, the Fox and I. One thing I've noted, a couple of things I noticed is, on Pleasant Street, the current curb is probably two and a half, three inches high, which is really not enough to prevent a car from crossing anywhere along that entire frontage. So while your driveway is shown as 51 feet with a two and a half inch curb, that's not going to prevent drivers from cutting into the pump sooner than the driveway, exiting sooner, closer to the intersection. And in fact, it looks like the sidewalk along that entire side of the road is not ADA compliant. So that I would suggest that the applicant work with the city to reset the curb height, which would allow the sidewalk to be put into ADA compliance without having to grade the site because you'd be lifting the roadside up because it looks like it's actually steeper toward the road. I'm not saying that you can't keep the opening the same size, but right now, you can see where, over the years, cars have just beat it up. And that would be that entire frontage. I don't see anything on here that indicates that you're fixing that existing wall and railing that's falling apart on the Pleasant Street side. Something that could be a fall hazard for someone. I see the same thing on the Warren Street side. I'm not sure the existing sidewalk along the frontage is ADA compliant. And if you are going to be looking at redoing pavement in the site, I think that should definitely be a consideration. Also don't know if it's possible to maybe get some green in here. I know, you know, certain things you said about stormwater, lot coverage, et cetera, but I think definitely the nose, like there's, I don't even know if it functions, the old telephone that's there and the old vacuum.
No.
Is it possible to tear those out, redo that kind of landscape wood, and create an actual green space and maybe define an area at the nose? I mean, this is kind of the entryway to this area. And I think it would behoove your client to try and clean it up. I'm not saying it's got to be these huge trees so it blocks your site, but grass, some shrubs, something. And I think the area on the Pleasant Street side of the building, behind that wall, is useless. It doesn't meet a width to provide parking space. Could that be turned into some green space? Maybe even the wall could be removed and the grading could come down to the back sidewalk. The other thing I noted is you show on your site plan a parking spot in front of the dumpster. But I believe according to the zoning ordinances, the loading area for refuse containers under, apologize, 28, 7, 14B, loading areas in front of dumpsters cannot be used for parking. So that would actually mean you'd have one less parking spot. So perhaps with the creation of that island area, you might be able to create a parking spot in between the canopy adjacent to kind of like where the existing telephone and whatnot are. As far as offsites, I understand what Heather says on pretty much everything. One thing I did note is you come up Pleasant Street. You cannot, because of the way the hill comes up to the signal, you cannot see the striping to tell you which lane to be in. So if you've got someone coming up the hill, doesn't really know which lane they want to go in, you've got somebody coming out of the driveway. So I'm wondering if there could be some enhancements to pavement marking and certainly signing on Pleasant Street with a lane you sign in advance to kind of help guide drivers as they're coming up the hill, especially as people are trying to come in and out of the site. And perhaps the no-left-turn sign, some consideration should be either to, A, relocating it across the street in front of the high school so it's the driver coming around the corner is looking directly at it, or supplement with a secondary no-left-turn sign. Because if somebody's coming up that hill, they're turning right. They're past that sign by the time they look back to see what's happening at the signal. So I know it sounds like a lot, but I think there is some room for improvement, but still fit with you wanting to reuse it, reuse the driveways, et cetera. And I think at least the sidewalks all fit within that condition of doesn't meet public safety. Right now, I don't think that that, those points do because they don't promote safe movement of pedestrians around the site.
Right, so the ordinance is quite clear that conditional use approvals can be conditioned. If the board embraced those suggestions as the board's suggestions versus your suggestions, I think we would accept them as smart ideas. The staff memo concludes with, without a recommendation, but it says, you know, if you're going to pass this thing, make it conditional on satisfying the planning and engineering division comments. I think we could go one of two ways, right? Those could be enumerated as conditions of the approval stated by the board, or they could be passed to staff as things you'd like to see addressed when we have some behind-the-scenes conversation in a condition of approval scenario. None of what I've heard, it's easy for me to say, but none of what I've heard is a showstopper. I think I just have some general concern about plantings in a very high visibility area and not dealing with site distance or obstruction issues. But if the types of suggestions that you have expressed could be done safely, I don't see them as a significant obstacle.
Yes.
I just want to follow up with Jeff. Jeff and I spent an hour out there on Sunday just kind of watching. And not to degrade it at all, but it wouldn't take a whole lot to make that place look better. I mean, it is, it is an eyesore. It really is right now, and the fence is all on the driveway laying down. It's not even up anymore. Two things that I just wanted to reiterate. In front, we, in the not-too-distant past, we talked about gateway entrances into the city. And short of the hospital intersection, that's really the first intersection you hit coming off of 89 or coming down from the hospital. It hits that, and that's the first thing you see. And it sticks, it sticks right into your face. So we talked a little bit, Jeff and I, on Sunday about what we might suggest because the area in front where the, there's an air pump and there's some posts and a telephone thing there. If that could get cleaned up, one of our concerns was employee parking because there is none there. And historically, I live in that neighborhood, I live up behind the high school. So I go through that intersection at least once a day. And two things. One, it was never maintained where the sign is if you're coming down. If you're going east on Pleasant Street, it's always been ugly. They never maintain that. It's been an eyesore. So that if there's some consideration, and Jeff made the point, that can't be a tree or anything like that because you're going to obstruct. Right in front of that sign, there's actually a reverse directions lane. So if you're in the right lane coming west on Pleasant, you can actually turn left without going through the, I mean, turn right without going through the light. The other thing, point that I wanted to make is you minimized the pedestrian traffic in that area. Right down the street, there used to be a pizza parlor, and all the kids went there. But at 3:15 in the afternoon, when your gas station was open, that was also packed with kids. And the, unfortunately, the crosswalk for the main entry to the school is down the hill. It's not opposite where the actual sidewalk from the school entry comes out. So I think, and kids were always running across the street there. They wouldn't wait for, and so I think you're going to have to, ultimately, that's going to create a problem for you that you don't, haven't seen because you've never seen it open. But you're going to get a lot of kids. And those kids are going to come right out the front door of the high school, and they're going to run right into your parking lot. And it's not once or twice, but several times. Any, any car coming up Pleasant Street reversing direction onto Warren, and the kids running across the street there. I've more than once seen, you know, the brakes go on because they come around that corner and there's no stop sign. There's a yield sign, but there's no stop sign there. So I think that that's going to be a problem for you in the, in the future. And if we can sort of think about that now and how we might address that. And you were correct, half of those push-button things don't work. So the kids run across the street anyway, you know, they don't wait. They don't wait the 40 seconds or whatever, and half of them don't care. So the point is that you're in the, you are under the gun, but it's a very busy intersection. It's five ways with a, with a reverse direction road in the middle of it and a high school that empties out several hundred kids. And the pizza place is closed now. Good for you, bad for the street.
So I really appreciate those comments. There's, there's nothing we can do about the sins of the past, and they weren't on our watch. But we are anxious to impress you with what's ahead. And all you've got to do is give us the chance. These suggestions are all fair game. I think we can work with them. If we hit a snag with staff, we know we can come back and speak to the board. But the reality is it's a conditional use approval we're seeking, and those conditions are sensible.
We understand that. Just from my standpoint, just pointing out what you haven't seen and that you will see, you know, once you're open.
Most certainly.
And Suzanne is not here tonight, but she would, she would love to talk to you. And Suzanne is not here tonight, but she would, she would love to talk to you about what she would think would be a nice area to plant out there by the telephone booth.
And you mentioned that you go by that site once a day?
At least.
For me, it's at least three.
Yeah, so, you know, we know.
I know of what you speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think you sat.
He trumps me.
I'm sorry, well, I think my hand was up first, but that's all right.
Byron's hand was up first.
Okay. Sorry, representative. First of all, Nuria, based on everything I've heard and everything I've seen and read, Nuria is a, is a, is a great company, and it sounds as if Concord would benefit from having Nuria here. I say that as a preface to the fact that I do still have concerns about this repopulating this station. In particular, two concerns. One is that our engineering department, engineering department, pretty conclusively recommended that, in their view, there were safety issues that led them to consider this, you know, a bad idea. The second is, I think that it is very germane, that it's quite possible that the reconfiguration of this intersection will be accelerated. It's not a guarantee, but it's more likely with the termination of the Langley Parkway Three project. I keep, as you've been talking and I've been listening to you, I, my eyes have kept going over to the image on the screen here and to that intersection, and trying to figure out when that intersection is reconfigured. And my assumption would be, not my knowledge, but my assumption would be that there would be a roundabout there, and I think Ari referred to that possibility. I just find it hard to see how engineering would accommodate that station back in business with a roundabout, which I think is pretty certain would be aimed not only at vehicular traffic, but also at bicycle traffic and facilitating pedestrian traffic. And so I don't have a solution for you, but I'm expressing my, my concerns. I don't know that you have a solution to that. So I'm really trying to determine how to vote on this. Thank you.
I thank you for the comments. The, the only solution I have for the possibility of public improvements is to take them as they come. There's never a certainty. I hear what you're saying, I don't have engineering solutions and no one would want mine. But I do know that projects get scheduled in CIPs, they move forward, they move back, they leave completely, they're the subject of considerable public debate, and sometimes they happen and sometimes they don't. And if this site was reconfigured and then it was in conflict with the public improvement, it would not be the first nor the last time that that has happened to occur.
Thank you, yes. So first of all, I was one of those kids that ran across the street illegally in nineteen-eighties, but, but there is a crosswalk there and there is a sidewalk, so they can actually, they follow the law, they can do that legally. My struggle here is what if this isn't done, what happens to the site? And I don't know what happens if we don't allow a usage. What is our, what is our responsibility as a city for the property owner, which is not Nuria, right? But are we taking their rights away is a concern of mine. So if somebody came along and bought this property and wanted to turn it into a park, we'd have the same concerns possibly. But I don't know. And nobody's coming along to Mr. Pollack's point to buy the property to do anything else with it. And it is an absolute eyesore, and it has been for a very, very long time. So I would be in favor of giving it a shot and cleaning it up. I remember very well what it used to be like. I don't remember major conflicts or people getting hit by a car there. So that's anecdotal, but I just don't remember that degree of catastrophic conflict on that site.
Well, I usually sit next to Matt so we can have a conversation on this, but I totally agree with Matt and I would vote for it. I've lived in that neighborhood for thirty years. I won't tell you, I walked it as a child, I walk it now regularly with my friends who live in the same neighborhood. And I'm very well aware, and we walk it sometimes when the kids are getting out of school, sometimes early in the day, and I drive it like Attorney Pollack does all the time. I don't see what the uses of that property are gonna be without some major headaches, unless it's the historic use. I mean, I think you've got hazardous waste cleanup, I think you've got a lot of potential issues. It is an eyesore. When I moved here, I said to my husband, you gotta be kidding, this is where you're moving me. Because every entrance was pretty bad. Now, I'd say the city, over the last thirty-plus years, has done a great job, and some of the entrances to the city are attractive, and I might go, oh, I think I would move here. The one that's horrible is that intersection. And you've got kids there who are going to football practice, you've got kids there who are going to soccer practice, most of the time the kids are walking on the other side, you've also already got a gas station. I agree with Matt, I think we give it a shot. And if it doesn't work, it's been your nickel, but it doesn't work. But I, number one, would love to see the site refurbished. I would, you know, I, I think, I listen to the issues the city has with, with the traffic, but having lived there and used it and my kids running from there to the pizza place or there to get whatever, I just don't see that we shouldn't actually go forward and then see what happens. And I do agree, it'd be nice to have a little bit of green space, but I also agree that you've got to be able to see what's in that gas station. You can't, I mean, you, you can have green, but it can't be high, you've got to see what is there. And I think you actually legally have to remove that telephone booth anyway. It's one who ran the telephone company, I think you have to move it. But I, I am going to vote for this, because I think we've gotta give them a chance, and if it doesn't work and they said they can't work it out in the city, it'd be a red wagon. But it could really be an improvement to the city.
Amanda.
I probably live the closest to this location, and I think I can see it down on my front window. I would say that if you're promising to make the improvements to, such as the crosswalk, which is desperately needed, because I do use that crosswalk quite frequently for my own exercise, and I see that there are definitely problems there with that crosswalk and the, the malfunctioning of it. As Ari stated before, it is what it is as far as the, the existing crosswalks, but if the sidewalk and/or crosswalk areas were improved, such as, you know, better striping and/or, because there is, within a certain amount of distance, at Warren Street, there is a crosswalk there, there is one in between, a little bit closer up to the intersection as well, and then, as we noted before, there is one at Warren and Liberty, which I think is where, from my understanding, historically, has probably been the, the more reckless area for pedestrians than it was close to the actual gas station itself from historical data that I'm aware of. So I'm in agreement with both Matt and Teresa, that I think that it could be an improvement that has been there for such a long time, for forty years or so, as we've already stated, that it's, is a common and historical use of that, that's nothing new, and it's not like you're asking to put in for the first time a gas station there. So I think those residents that have been here for a significant amount of time are familiar and understand the traffic concerns that were existing before and will exist again. So I do think that it's, it's not like a new use of it, so, and I think it could be an improvement, so.
You're done, Amanda?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Matt?
Thank you. Could I just make one more brief comment? Thank you for agreeing to fix the signals, but that really, and I appreciate that, but really, why are they not fixed now? I mean, high school students are crossing this intersection every single day, so shame on us in the city for allowing it to happen, but thank you for offering.
Anyone else on the board?
I have a question of staff and a comment. My question, excuse me, is this reverse direction business that is clearly, as I understand it, you can currently turn right from Pleasant onto Warren without going through the light? What was that discussion about? I'm sorry, I'm not, you can turn right? If you're coming up Pleasant Street, there was discussion about coming up the hill and being able to turn right.
Right there.
You can start here, slip around without waiting at the light and making this very difficult maneuver.
So you were asking, what was the?
So I guess I'm wondering, since it seems like that is creating a dangerous situation for pedestrians. I know, I know it's there right now, but I'm just wondering if that is an accident waiting to happen, and if that's something that the city should be, should be looking at. That aside, I just, I just want to comment that when, I mean, I appreciate that improving this site would be a humongous improvement for the neighborhood and the city. I do note that, and I don't remember what year this closed and how long this has been in its current state of disrepair.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty sometime.
It closed in twenty-twenty.
Okay, it's that reason, okay. But certainly since the time it was initially permitted, the Concord High School campus has increased dramatically. The Concord Regional Technical Center has materialized. The Concord Hospital Campus has increased dramatically. The State Hospital Campus has been converted from a site that really had very little traffic in and out to an office park that has a lot of traffic in and out. So there's a lot more traffic going through that intersection now than there was historically, which is a concern to me. Something else I wanted to say? Oh, plus, there is a lot of emergency vehicle traffic that goes through that intersection, and I, I don't know if any of the traffic studies kind of take that into consideration, because when you get an ambulance coming through with lights and sirens, then everybody else has to have someplace to go. And at certain times of day, the streets there are pretty lined with, with parked vehicles waiting for students to come out. So those, those are my concerns.
With regard to your question about the, the city is looking at the intersection with regard to, you know, putting a new CIP in for, for this intersection, and there's plans, there's a signalized intersection concept, and there's also a roundabout intersection concept. So the roundabout gets rid of that.
Of that slip lane.
Yes.
Byron. Thanks, Amanda, Chair. I, I have some thoughts about exiting onto Warren Street from this site. However, it occurs to me that we've kind of slipped from questions for the applicant into general discussion without opening the floor to the public. So I would like to reserve my comments until after that takes place.
Okay. All right. Folks from the audience who wish to comment on this application? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Nicole Fox, and I am a member of the leadership team of Concord Greenspace. We are deeply concerned that reopening the gas station will worsen traffic and importantly impose an increased threat to public safety. When the Gulf Station was operational, it made an already dangerous five-way intersection even more complicated and difficult for automobiles, cyclists, and pedestrians to navigate. The location is busy with school buses, a large volume of cars, and Concord High School students walking to school from the surrounding neighborhoods and the student parking lots on Warren Street Memorial Field. As noted, when the gas station was open before, students streamed across Warren Street to access the convenience store. I also live in the neighborhood and drive through this intersection and walk and run through this intersection all the time, and I very much remember the alarm at some of the students and their choices. The driveways for this site are wider than the twenty-eight-foot maximum to allow for the delivery of gas in large trucks, and those driveways are located too close to the intersection. Another use on this property could come closer to meeting those criteria. It's our understanding the city has plans to reconfigure this intersection as a roundabout, which will make it safer for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and importantly, eliminate that slip lane. The location and size of the driveways for this gas station will likely interfere with proper operations of a roundabout, because they are so wide and located so close to the intersection. We ask the planning board not to approve anything on this property that could preclude the city's own intersection improvements. An active gas station at this location will significantly increase the danger to all who travel in and around the area. This was never a good location for a gas station, and we ask that you not approve returning the parcel to this use.
Thank you. Anyone else from, yes?
Thank you for your time and effort on behalf of our city, I really appreciate it. You guys have great input and feedback and ask great questions, and it's just an honor to watch the process. My name is Meredith Cooley, and I'm the co-director of Concord Greenspace. I support everything that you just heard from Nicole Fox. Reopening the gas station at this tricky intersection is a huge safety concern, and many Concord community members have reached out to Concord Greenspace about the issue. So I emailed, many of whom are parents of children at the high school. So I went ahead and emailed Superintendent Kathleen Murphy and the Concord School Board to see if they were aware of the issue and to express community concerns. And the superintendent responded with an email stating the following, she says, "Good morning, Meredith, hope you are well. I wanted to let you know that several weeks ago, Matt Cashman and I had a conversation with Ms. Shank, city planner, regarding the property across from CHS, Concord High School. We indicated, we indicated that developing the property would add many concerns for the district, pedestrian safety, student and staff drivers, as well as the buses that access CRTC and the high school. Yesterday, I addressed the issue within my weekly report to the school board and receiving, after receiving a copy of the report from the city. After reading the city report, there are many concerns noted about developing the site. There is some history to the site when it was a gas station and mini-store," from the superintendent. "The school district is tasked with student safety, so I think that this speaks volumes to the issue." And personally, I live near that intersection, and this probably dates me, but I've seen students when it was operational, it was like the game Frogger, where they would step out into, pause traffic and maneuver. So I, I just concur with, with all the safety issues others have expressed. Thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else from the audience wish to speak? Okay, sir, come forward.
Hi, my name is Ian McGregor. I'm also here with Concord Greenspace. Thank you for being here this late at night and listening to everyone's concerns. I, I, my issue with this is the health and safety component with the vehicle traffic as well as pedestrian traffic along Warren and Pleasant Streets. As Heather mentioned earlier in her traffic study, it is not a trip generating use of the property. The majority of traffic that will visit the gas station comes during the peak hour. That holds true. Myself, I generally get gas when I'm going to or coming from work. I will not make a separate trip to do that. But I assume like most people, I'm also running late when I'm going to or coming from work, which makes getting gas a task that nobody likes to do, that's an assumption I'm making, that much more frustrating. So then I'm rushing and hurrying to make myself not any more late than I have to be. However, during peak hour, anybody that needs to access this, entering or exiting with a left-hand turn, would rely on the generosity of others. with a left-hand turn, would rely on the generosity of others to have them enter the site. Which if you're making a left-hand turn from Pleasant Street, you're stacking traffic behind you until that courteous driver does allow you access into the site. Hopefully, being a nice driver, you would get out of their way as soon as possible. Hopefully, you look for pedestrians on your way through. And vice versa, if you're exiting, taking a left onto Warren Street. However, in that scenario, you would be careful to not get T-boned by any traffic that you didn't see coming from the eastern direction. So in, in, I, I believe that opening this site for an automotive-oriented use is knowingly causing harm to pedestrian and vehicle traffic. I also want to state that the size of vehicles is increasing. I was just curious, I looked it up, the hood of a Ford F-150 is equivalent to the roofline of a Honda Civic. Not only increasing the fatality rate for any car crashes that were to occur, whether you're a pedestrian or in another vehicle, but also vastly increasing the blind spots that exist in front of these vehicles. And I know a lot of high schoolers that are not, you know, up to the roofline of a Honda Civic. So I hate to sound like Maude Flanders up here, but will somebody please think of the children? That is my testimony.
Okay, thank you. I saw another hand, yes, ma'am?
Hello, members of the planning board. My name is Stacy Brown, and I would just like to state that I am here to state my own personal opinions. What I'm about to state is not a reflection of anything else except my own personal opinions. I live about a half mile from this site. I'm a runner. We purposely moved to Concord and live about a half mile from downtown so that we could walk, run, all over the city. And I, those lights do work, but we call them the forever lights because they take forever. So when I am running through that site, I frequently cut through that property, and I see a lot of other people do the same thing. When we go see the fireworks at Memorial Field, we cut through that property. And we see hordes of people walking down Pleasant Street, down, I don't know, is it Warren Street? You know, everyone cuts through. It is a high pedestrian traffic area. And I know we talk about the historical use of this site, and I have a historical home, and I love my historical home, but there are some things that we can let go, especially gas, gas stations. I personally would like to see more pedestrian-friendly sites. I have two dogs, I have two kids. I would rather walk and bike around the city than drive. So I would like to see this site change or give the city the opportunity to re-envision it for pedestrians. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, board members, chair. I am familiar with that intersection too, because I.
Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Oh, Donald Jewell.
Thank you.
And I have noticed the site and studied the site just from walking by it in light of what's going on here tonight. We talked a lot about the high school, and we talk a lot, it seems like, what goes on during the day. But having had several boys go through Concord High School and play sports, there's a lot of evening activities for the band, concerts, basketball games, all sorts of things. And in the wintertime, you know, the, it gets dark early. And there's, there's a lot of kids that go over to the store after. I mean, mine were no exception, and, you know, so, and I've never considered that area very well-lighted. So i- if this project does go forward, I would certainly hope that, you know, you would make pedestrian travel in that area at night a concern in terms of, of better lighting for that street area. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Please sign in on the table behind you. Anyone else from the audience? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And entertain discussion from the board.
Just wanted to make one point of rebuttal. I'm sorry, I'll keep it quick. There was a mention of the site driveways and the proximity to intersection. Those were subject of variances that were obtained from the zoning board. They are non, they are non-conforming, but they were permitted to remain by variance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated before, we heard from members of the public, one of my concerns is, safety concerns, is automobiles trying to make a left-hand turn onto Warren Street from this property? And I gather from the staff, and I'm asking you as the applicant to respond to this, I understand from the staff that they don't consider or that, that directional arrows and so on and so forth are not an option or a very difficult option. Because frankly, you know, particularly when the light changes, you have traffic coming from the west, you have traffic backed up on, you know, from the east. It's, you know, it's quite probable or likely that someone might be trying to go west on Warren Street through the intersection and then down Pleasant Street, which seems to be a, you know, a fairly dangerous, potentially a fairly dangerous situation. So if you could respond to that.
I'm, I, I think I understand what you're saying. The, yeah, you're worried about the left turns coming out. Oh, yeah, let's, let's get that back up. Is there a password? Oh, it's on it. I got it.
And it's a zero, not an O in Concord.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, okay.
So, so.
So what you're concerned about are, let me see here, left turns out onto Warren Street.
Correct.
But as you can see, it is striped as a through, through right, because you can go north on North Fruit Street, and then Warren Street is, is striped as a, as a left turn lane to get onto either, either South Fruit Street or to Pleasant Street eastbound.
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is the fact that you have traffic traveling, excuse me, traffic, traffic traveling east on Warren Street.
Yep.
That people are trying to cut, if somebody, if somebody's just, you know, if somebody's turning left, you know, they basically are trying to get into the westbound lane.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is you also have traffic coming from the east when the light changes.
Yeah.
And, you know, but it's both a safety issue, but also it's a, it's a traffic flow issue. If somebody is, if somebody pulls out and is astride the eastbound lane, waiting for traffic to clear in the westbound lane, then they're blocking, basically blocking traffic and backing traffic up into the intersection.
Yes.
Right, so, so you know, I mean, that person should stay on the site until there's room to safely come onto the roadway.
And you, you know that people often don't do that, like the lady who I saw pulling a U-turn on Main Street today.
Right, and so those people are out there. We hope that they will learn better and do better. But what we can say about this site is that we did research accident history, and it was minimal. So that is a concern. We're not making it better or worse, but it hasn't been a problem in the past.
This is very common at any driveways like this, adjacent to a signalized intersection. I mean, you, you, this is not the only driveways in the city that are close to signalized intersections. And we know in our traffic study about the queuing, and you have to wait on-site until the, until there is an adequate gap in traffic to leave. That's the responsibility of the, the driver.
Thank you.
Part of my thinking here is looking at the other, I, I know this is a little different because it's sort of in this triangle, and thinking about the other gas station, the orthodontist's office. Both of these front on two streets that are quite busy. And so although this is a bit different, if students from Concord High are cutting across to go to, and they're not using the crosswalk on the other streets, which they often don't, what should we do about that? And I don't know, and part of this is, and if I heard Heather correctly, when did the grandfathering expire on this, as far as for the usage?
I think it's one, after one year of non-use.
After one year of non-use. So if this applicant had come two years ago, then we wouldn't really be having this discussion at all. That's not to say that if we have an opportunity to do something different, we shouldn't take it, and some people are arguing for that. But what should we do? I haven't heard anybody offering to buy the property at six hundred-something thousand dollars, I think the attorney Pollock said, and turn it into Greenspace. And this is just being practical. Would I like to see Greenspace there over a gas station? Absolutely. But that's not really, it's not my preference. So if somebody had come along to buy the property, Noria, you know, wouldn't be looking to lease this property, but it's not happening. So short of the city taking this by eminent domain and paying the money out of our tax dollars, I don't know what else we do with the site. I'm done.
So I, I would say.
Go ahead, Heather.
There are many uses that could have, that could be on the site, many different uses that could be on the site. Uses where maybe they don't, they need variances and they don't have parking. This use is the most vehicular-intensive use you could possibly put on a site that is woefully inadequate. Even just an ice cream shop, or a sandwich shop, or, you know, a skateboard shop. I mean, any one of them may not, you know, the high school might not want students crossing the road, but there are lots of uses, just because this one has existed, doesn't necessarily mean that that's the one that we should be choosing now. I'm getting emails from our engineering staff saying, you know, if there's a gas station here, we need to take, we need to ask for easements along all the frontage because it's seriously going to impede our ability to develop solutions for that intersection because it's so close to that intersection. I, I'm hearing several people say, well, let's give it a shot. But that's, there's no such thing as give it a shot. If you approve the application, you're going to have a gas station here for the next 50 years. And whether it works or not, whether you like it or not, we obviously know cars will get in and out. Will it be at the, at the expense of the pedestrian connectivity of the neighborhood and of the safety of the neighborhood? I think so. But, you know, none of the comments in the staff report are really about traffic, other than the circulation of the trucks having to go in there and there being insufficient space on the site to adequately create a logical, comprehensive circulation. The other gas station does have sufficient space for cars and vehicles and trucks to move the way you want them to move on a gas station. Is it ideal? No. It's a gas station. It's another gas station. But there is a much larger site, and it functions. I'll also note, when they came to try to renovate their site, staff went, at that time, we had our city traffic engineer on staff, Rob Mack, said you would need to close these curb cuts. Told them they had to close the curb cuts. They decided not to move forward those improvements because they didn't want to close the curb cuts, but they were told they needed to close the curb cuts. I'm not sure why the ZBA granted those variances, because there are conditional use permits that they could have gotten. So this board is actually the correct entity to be evaluating whether or not those curb cuts remain or whether or not they need to be removed or relocated. So I'm not entirely sure how that all happened. But their, I, I agree with their traffic study. They're not making anything worse, but it's already pretty bad. And we can make a choice right now to do something else there, or we can make a choice to commit to this in perpetuity for the foreseeable future. Because there's no such thing as give it a shot. Like, they're going to make it work. They're going to be there if you give them the permission to be there, whether you think it end up, ends up working or the city ends up thinking that it works or not. So I just wanted to clarify those few things. And in terms of the use, like I said, your initial question was about the use. You know, they, there's lots of uses, it's not necessarily our job to say, to say, you know, since this has been there, or this is what they can get the most money for, you know. I mean, what if they could find a use that, that would generate even more income? Would we feel that we had a responsibility or obligation to allow that use? I don't think so.
I have a question.
I think she's mischaracterizing what we were saying.
No, I was just going to ask Heather, if I could ask you the question. If you look at this for another use, I would assume, since it's been a gas station, it's a hazardous waste site. So the question to me is, I would assume anybody else who comes in there other than a gas station has to clean it up, which may well make it, I mean, it seems to me kind of like what we got with the gas holder, which may make it prohibitively expensive to have another use. So I'm just asking, what uses do you see there that would not require hazardous waste cleanup?
Well, it's not, I don't think it's clear what the situation with regard to hazardous waste is. If it's the worst-case scenario, you're correct, somebody would have to mitigate that. If it's, you know, they're, they're telling us that they're very clean and that they have just replaced all this stuff, and, you know, I, I don't know the situation on the site. You know, it very, it very, I'm not, I don't, not enough of a tech, I don't have that technical background to answer that question, but certainly there could be other uses on the site. You know, what would have to happen to make them, to allow them? I, I don't know.
Thank you.
Just because it came up, I just want to make the point that I, I don't have any information about any hazardous waste on the property. I, I'm not aware of any spills or discharges, no cleanup reports, no closure reports. Maybe it happened, maybe it didn't, but I'm not, I'm completely unaware of that being a part of the existing condition.
Okay, I really would like to close the public hearing now. So you folks may retreat. So, who would like to say something at this point?
I'd like to say, just, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Okay. I, I know that, that there's several of us here that, you know, are not in favor of gas stations for a multitude of reasons. I guess my, my point would be that it's, it's not that we have a, a no or a yes answer to this, to the solution of this particular site. But I do want to say that if we reject this project, and as Heather has completely pointed out to me, there isn't a lot of interest in anybody else populating this site, so that we really have to say to ourselves, okay, we're going to reject this particular applicant. However, it's going to be what it is right now for probably a very long time. And then I refer back to the fact that I consider that a gateway intersection into the city. Past the hospital, but it's still a gateway intersection. And the fact that, that this particular applicant is going to, based on their reputation and, you know, our sense of them, this applicant is going to clean that up considerably. So that, that has to be part of our consideration. Not that we don't, we like gas stations or don't like gas stations, and we already got one in that intersection. But the fact is that it's historically a gas station, and because I don't like gas stations doesn't mean that I have to, I have to oppose their liking gas stations because they're in that business. So my vote would be based on, one, their reputation, and, two, the appearance of the site as it is right now, and would probably stay that way for some period of time. That's my concern.
Madam Chair, to move it forward, I will make a motion based upon the safety issues that have been raised and the traffic issues that have been raised, to make a motion to deny the applicant.
The CUP.
Is there a second?
CUP, sorry.
Is there a second? Can I second it? I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion fails. I think you were actually supposed to say nay, but we understood what you meant.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that Jeff, who had the most comprehensive Madam Chair, may I suggest that Jeff, who had the most comprehensive, you know, overview of this, that he formulate his, his comments, which were very favorably received by the applicant, into a motion?
I'm wondering if it's easier to have the motion be that I can forward my comments to staff and let staff work through the issues, if that's appropriate, Heather? I can, I can put them in words and, and we can do it that way.
If, I guess we, we have the record, so I guess we say as referenced in the, in the meeting, the items discussed during the meeting, just so there's some.
Right, to make sure there's a, what they have to do.
Right, well, yeah, we want some clarity. We don't want to make it just a wide-open, ambiguous what Jeff said.
Right, I agree. That's kind of why I'm trying to get away from that. I mean, I can lay them out a little cleaner if you want, but, or the, I can pull back up the plan here. So I can make a motion to approve with the requirement that they fix the sidewalk along the site frontage, along Pleasant Street and Warren Street to meet current city standards for curb height and ADA accessibility. That they remove some of the extraneous materials at the nose of the island and create an appropriate landscape area there, including improving it and bringing it all the way up to the sidewalk level so that it defines the pedestrian route. And then the area along Pleasant Street that is, that little triangular wedge that is not functioning as a parking space, that they remove pavement and landscape that area. And that they add a lane use sign and possibly a striping improvement to city standard to indicate the lane usage in the street approaching the intersection. And I think the last one I had was adding an additional no-left-turn sign on Warren Street opposite the slip ramp so it's more visible to traffic.
I would add that we ask for right-of-way easements for when the, when the CIP project comes down and needs to be designed.
Do we know what those right-of-way easements are to require?
Well, it would be, we would, we would ask for right-of-way easements relative to what the future public improvements would be on, for that intersection. It's not designed yet, but we may, we may need them.
Right, so I guess my question is, how do we require them to provide easements that we don't know what they are?
We do that. That's the thing we do regularly. We, we say that it's relative to what the design ends up being. Like, if we, if, now that Langley Parkway is removed from the equation, we may need two-lane right, you know, turn, turn roundabout there. So if we need a two-lane roundabout there, we might need an extra five feet or something like that. So it'd be completely dependent on whatever, what that design is. So it would kind of be an open, there'd be loose language to allow that to occur. Which is what we did, for instance, when we did the easements through the monitor property for the future Whitney Road right-of-way. We didn't know where that was, but we had vague language that would allow that to occur.
I guess my concern, my only question, the reason I'm asking this is how do we know suddenly we're not going to require easements such that they can't circulate around the pump anymore and makes the whole site invalid? Because wouldn't that end up being an illegal taking?
That would be, yes, so we would not do that.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to be careful of, is that, you know, we kind of, you know, because obviously there's state property there that we're going to have to deal with, there's city school property that we have to deal with, there's two other developers on the other corner.
Exactly.
I, I'm only hesitating because I just, I'm concerned with the language. I'm not saying you've not done it in the city, but.
Well, I'm sure that they're not going to necessarily agree to, you know, to it if it isn't to their satisfaction, in terms of the legal language.
Right.
How about we negotiate, we, we work with the applicant to develop a language acceptable to both?
That would be fine. The only other thing I had was a parking space in front of the dumpster. If I'm understanding the ZODA ordinance, that would not be allowed.
We'll look into it.
I guess that pretty much surmises everything I had.
I have one other thing, Madam Chair.
Yes.
One other thing to add to what we saw in, in that, the, the brick wall that has fallen on the side, half of it's fallen on the sidewalk, the other half is still there, that some, something to address the brick wall failure, the retaining wall on Pleasant Street get addressed as part of the conditions that Jeff has laid out.
And that could either be regrading the hill if they're going to take the pavement out of there and create it as part of the grass area, or repair it such that it doesn't become a fall trip hazard.
Okay. We got it.
Do we also have to include the precedent conditions in the motion?
Yes.
So include precedent conditions one and two.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Okay. One more. Okay, I think it would be appropriate to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, a little warm in here.
Narrow.
So, we are now to item seven G, which is Andy Sanborn on behalf of Big Step LLC requesting major site plan approval to construct a charitable gaming hall, restaurant, and microbrewery along with a conditional use permit approval for disturbance of wetland buffers at seven Break-A-Day Drive in the Gateway Performance District.
So, staff did recommend this be determined complete at the last public hearing, determined development of regional impact at the last public hearing, and we are recommending now to open the public hearing tonight, this evening, for the site plan. We do have additional feedback from, from the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, from the Pembroke Planning Board, so I guess we can bring, go over those as they come up in the public hearing. We're staff, because of a number of outstanding issues, staff is not recommending the motion be made tonight, is to give time to address some of these issues that have come up in the meantime. That's, that's all the update. I'll, I'll let them go ahead with their presentation.
Well, we need a, or we don't need.
Right. It was determined complete last week.
Last time.
You just need to open the public hearing.
Okay. So, I will here with, open the public hearing, and you may proceed.
All right. Good evening. Let me introduce myself and our team. My name is Nick Golan. I'm a licensed engineering principal with TF Moran. To my right is the applicant from Concord Commitment, Mr. Andy Sanborn. Further to his right is our architect from Banwell Architects, Jeremiah Goulet.
Who am I?
Behind us, Mr. Bob DeValle, who you heard from earlier, as TF Moran's president and also our chief traffic engineer. And further to the back, representing Ekman Construction, who would be our construction manager, is Mr. Mike Foster. So, we want to make sure we provide our full team to you, in case there are any specific questions that we may be able to answer. So, relative to the project, it was mentioned at the opening, this is a phased development that will include the sit-down restaurant lounge, charitable gaming hall, brew pub, hotel conference center, and events area. The comprehensive development plan for such was approved at the last planning board meeting. Relative to this initial phase in which we're asking for approval, this consists of the 24,000 square foot charitable gaming hall lobby lounge, which would contain 634 gaming stations, also back-of-house space for office, storage, et cetera, as well as an 8,500 square foot sit-down restaurant and brew pub with approximately 150 seats. So, relative to where we are proposing this, this is three to seven Break-A-Day Drive, tax map 46Z lots 36 and 37. We'll flip to the existing conditions plan real quick, just so we can get ourselves located. So, access to the site off of Loudon Road that, or off of Loudon Road via Break-A-Day Drive. Break-A-Day Drive is in a little bit of tough shape. There's some areas where it's 28 feet. Yeah, that was a little bit of understatement, but I didn't want to go overboard to start. It's in need of some rehabilitation, 28 feet wide in some areas, 24 in others, narrows down to 12 and almost zero in other areas along its full length, which is approximately 750 linear feet. We'll get to what we're proposing to do that in a few moments. But relative to these, the parcels themselves, it's approximately 13 acres total, and we are located in the Gateway Performance District, which is appropriate given the intended use. So, let's talk a little bit about this existing site. We'll talk about the site layout, then we'll have an opportunity to talk about sightlines, architecture, the traffic components, and then a little bit of update on where we're at with our state permits, if that would please the board. So, flipping to our site layout plan relative to the layout, you know, this is something that it took considerable time. One of the major concerns that was addressed early in the project was site access, particularly fire department access, and how that could be best arranged. I believe at our last meeting in January, we were able to provide the full update that a fire department access road has now been included, that has been deemed acceptable to meet the requirements of the fire department. We had met with you guys previously as well, went back in December, giving you just a general update on where we're at, and that was one of the key issues that we were trying to resolve. And if we jump way back to September, was our initial meeting with you folks, so this would be meeting four, where we're hoping to make a little bit more progress. So, I had mentioned the condition of Break-A-Day Drive and its proposed reconstruction. This would meet the city requirements of a non-residential mixed-use local street, which is 34 feet wide of pavement. So, that's a pretty substantial road when we think about access, but that does a lot of things to our benefit, really helps facilitate the necessary turning movements in and out of the site, and provide the fire department with that level of security that they are going to have the appropriate access to the site during different components. Relative to the site layout, we'll note that there are two site driveways, the first of which is located along really the westerly front of the building. I'm trying not to get you, Jose. There you go. Which is the site driveway. This would be our primary site access, and provides access to the parking lot and circulation routes. There's also a secondary driveway located to, further to the north and east. Purpose of this is to getting access to delivery, delivery area, also access to mechanical pads, and also to facilitate additional fire department access, which is made via this loop road. I mentioned parking. It provides all the parking that's required relative to this phase, as well as with the future phase with the comprehensive development plan. Relative to site lighting, because we realize that's always a component that someone wants to look at, especially with this being a new development, you know, this is all dark night, it's dark, dark sky compliant site lighting, an appropriate photometric plan has been provided for the site. I had mentioned the location of dumpster pads along the back with appropriate screening. Let's talk real quick about landscaping, in that, well, actually, before we do that, let me just say, speak real quick to drainage. Drainage facilities are proposed primarily as a closed drainage system. This will drain to an infiltration basin that is located along the rebuilt Break-A-Day Drive. This overflows into the city municipal system. We show there's reductions in the peak rate of runoff in every storm event. I did read through one of the regional planners' comments, and I think they may have misread our drainage report, where they said we were increasing runoff from the property. That's not the case. We have reductions in all our peak rates of runoff. Relative to that basin, one of the updates that's taken place is that we now have an overflow that would go into the right-of-way associated with Break-A-Day. It's meant as an emergency if there was ever an issue with that stormwater management area. Relative to its final location, we'll work that out with Jose to make sure it's consistent with engineering department's best recommendations. Yeah, we'll be short and see the drainage. Let's, let's talk a little bit about landscaping. This was one of the big points of discussion with the Architectural Design Review Committee, trying to maximize green space, provide additional plantings where appropriate, acknowledging that we also need to provide some room for snow storage. So, although it would be ideal to plant trees along the entire perimeter of the site, we do have to be mindful that we do need to relieve some element for snow storage in proximity to the project. So, a couple of fun updates that I wanted to provide, we did increase the perimeter buffer from five to 15 feet. There was noted as a staff, as a requirement, in that in the future phases, we would have more than 750 parking spaces, that we should really abide by that regulation now versus planning for it in the future. Noting that approximately 400 or so of our parking spaces would be located in a parking garage. So, I'm not sure if that requirement's really specific to that element where we're using a parking garage, but we've provided it nonetheless. Green space, 5% required, we're providing 10%. Noting in the future phase where 7% is required, it's approximately 11 and a half percent. So, relative to the interior workings of our site, we have been very mindful to provide oversized islands where we do have green areas, and we've also been able to enhance the plantings. To that end, we've added a mix of deciduous and evergreen and ornamental grasses to provide additional screen in the parking areas, again, being mindful of the sightlights. When we were visiting with ADR, that was something they were very specific about, they're like, "We love the landscaping, we love the trees, but let's make sure we can see where we are as those trees grow in." So, there's some of those specific areas are really this northern median, where previously we had very limited plantings. Those have now been enhanced with additional shrubs and trees. And then also the easterly parking lot through here, where we have also enhanced that area to provide additional shrubs and trees. Additional landscaping elements have been added since we last talked. We now have street trees along our fire department access through here, noting that unfortunately, as part of the future phase, those would be removed. And then also additional plantings along the secondary site drive to provide additional screening, both to that site drive and then also to the dumpster and loading area along the back. So, we made a lot of headway with ADR. They did recommend approval with certain stipulations. We'll have the opportunity to talk a little bit about the building elements momentarily, but one of the other primary focuses was really sightlines. You know, what are we going to see, and from where will we see? Now, when we originally sat down with you folks, we had the opportunity to share sightlines from Loudon Road. There's our lovely overall with a nice front-facing view of, of the building. But when we look from Loudon Road, and I know we've addressed this before, but I noticed it was mentioned as a staff, a staff comment, so we want to revisit it just quickly. Elevationally, the, the building, the building sits 16 feet above Loudon Road. We can see from the proposed landscaping, as well as the existing landscaping to remain, sightlines are very minimal. And more so from Break-A-Day Drive, elevationally, we're still, our building sits 12 feet above that. So, the reality is you are looking into a slope along those portions of Loudon Road. This gives more of that overview. Now, obviously, no one's going to be in a helicopter looking down on our site necessarily, but I think it's important just to point out the other elements. We do have Chapel Tractor directly abiding us, and you can see the rebuilt road with Break-A-Day Drive. What we transitioned to then is really sightlines from 393. That was a focal point. So, what we did to try and address those elements, which we think ADR was, was fairly happy with, was develop some sections. So, we're not just looking at what the sightline is, what are the actual grades? Specifically, what would those grades be if we're ultimately able to take down those grades within the limited access right-of-way? So, I'll start from the west, so we can see our plan view above. So, this is traveling west on 393, and we've got a bit of a snapshot of what we would see. Now, the reality is, there's a fair amount of median plantings in 393 that obscure sightlines, and you can see it pretty well in this picture, this is where they start, and, and they continue past our building. Those are going to remain, there's nothing we can do about those being there, but we do want to make sure we showed you, you know, where is this building going to be most, most visible from on 393, and this is the location that we selected. So, when we get a feel for what we're looking at, and I'm going to have to zoom in so we can see it, in that background, you can see some elements of the building. One of the comments that we had from ADR was, can we do a little something more with those windows? So, it would be providing something more consistent with what we have on the front facade, which our team's going to work through. But when we think about what those sightlines are, as we're heading in this direction, westbound's fair, fairly limited, we'll say. If we switch over and take a look at the eastbound approach, again, we have a fair amount of limitations. Now, even with taking down that slope, which is a fair amount, we're talking about 30 to 40 vertical feet, and leaving an additional burn height of 30 feet there now, the reality is, it's not going to give us the sightlines we truly want of the building, but what it does is it enhances our ability to build out our parking in the future without the use of retaining walls. So, what this sightline shows is, the worst-case scenario, if all these trees were removed, which they won't be, you can see where our limits of grading are proposed as currently shown, so there would be some tree element that would remain there, that, looking at what we'd say maybe is one of the less attractive portions of the building, the back around the area of the loading, you know, this is potentially what someone would see if they're craning their neck around as they're making their way around the corner. Ideally, they've got their eyes on the road, but we thought as a worst-case scenario, this is something that the planning board would like to see. Now, this was that worst-case scenario. What we did is we did take it a step farther, and said, all right, well, relative to as we're traveling down 393, you know, what would we be looking at? So, again, that's the, the large overview from the highway. This is a more direct look, again, westbound, but eastbound, as we're traveling through this area. And this is reflective of those grades being brought down. This is bringing down those grades by approximately 30 to 40 feet. Unfortunately, you don't see Phase One of the project. As you continue down 393, again, we still don't quite have a sightline for the project. As we start to approach our line of sight that would be at a 45 degree angle, which you'd expect someone would be able to see, we start to pick up a little bit of a corner of the building. You'll note that the, Jeremiah, what was the appropriate term? We had an additional building element that could have been signage or otherwise was located in that area, that's been since deleted.
Yeah, we were proposing a tower on the 393 side that has been removed.
Okay. Thank you. And this brings us to that final site view that we were looking at originally, where this is where you're going to see the worst-case scenario of what the building would look like from that sightline. So, I thought it appropriate to really spend a little bit of time to show you the same items that we showed to ADR. It was met favorably. They did have a couple of things they'd like us to work on, and at this point, what I'd like to do is transition it over to Jeremiah to talk about those elevations. What are we building here? What are some of those elements? And if you want, I'll give you pointer there, the, the red button will.
Would you mind flipping to the front elevation first?
Sure. Let's do it.
Okay. So, here's the, the main entrance side elevation. So, you know, it was the applicant's desire to, you know, pay homage to, to local buildings here in New Hampshire, so that's why we've reflected this, this aesthetic, to go for more of a mill building appearance, something that has an industrial feel. And you can see here from the front, the elevation, this is the, the parking side that you'll be looking at. This is the double-height charitable gaming space here, and the port cochere entry here on, on this corner. So, this front facade would be represented in brick, and a lot of the elements are in keeping with sort of the mill building aesthetic, you know, with arch top windows, pile asters with brick reveals, you know, extended cornice at the, at the roof lines. The port cochere is represented in some steel, steel columns and framing with some exposed timber there. There is phased expansion plans on, on both the, the west side and the east side. What you're looking at here is the west side, the Loudon, the site's on the Loudon side. So, there is, it's intentionally left somewhat sparse as that is phased additional, addition space. I guess we can skip to the next sheet. And in looking at the, the other sides of the building, these are the 393 sides, there are planned offices at the rear of the building. This is the delivery access on this corner. And then, looking at the east side, you can see that delivery station area here, and there are phased expansion plans here as well, and this, as you can see, the side, the side elevation of the, the port cochere. So, as Nick stated, we have met with the Architectural Design Review Board twice, I believe, already, so we are in the process of considering their comments, and we do have planned a follow-up meeting with them.
Very good. Thank you. And I'll note that just as far as the, the design team goes, the comments we had, we thought were all very productive, and really got us creatively thinking about, you know, what type of improvements can we make to the building? So, looking forward to going back and, and meeting with them and seeing what we can arrive at. So, now we've talked a little bit about site, we've talked about sightlines, we've talked about architecture. We know within the staff report, one of the concerns was the traffic report, so I can, I'd like to invite Bob DeValle up to the table, and if you don't mind, if he can take your chair, Jeremiah, for one minute, and, actually, I'll switch. Bob, do you want, need use of the laptop?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going to pull up a few slides here that I'd like to go over.
So, that's the flash drive that I had in there.
All right. So, this is a summary of the trip generation of the, of this proposal, of Phase One of this proposal, which is 634 gaming positions. It shows the peak hour trips in the Phase One proposal are 292 in the weekday PM peak hour, and 393 in the Saturday peak hour. This here is a, is a sort of a brief overview of what impacts that traffic has on existing roadways. And the letters, hopefully, you know, there's enough magnification there that you can see that. The letters and the circles represent existing and proposed overall levels of service, and the numbers represent volume to capacity ratio, which is a measure of the, of the utilization, the theoretical utilization of the intersection, so a low number says there's a lot of reserved capacity at the end of the day. And the thing that you should notice is that almost every intersection is, is only minimally affected by the, by that level of traffic from this proposal. A large portion of the traffic moves to the north along this short section of Loudon Road, and then enters the 393 interchange. Some, of course, goes down Sheep Davis Road, some goes down Loudon Road. But by and large, the traffic outside of the area of the, of the project itself is, is through traffic at, at these other intersections that have multiple lanes, and they generally work well. So, what you see here is that, at, at the Walmart intersection, at the bottom of the screen, it's an overall level B, 45% volume to capacity ratio, which means it's 55% of the capacity of that intersection remains in the build condition, minimal effect in the, on the existing conditions. At the next two intersections, these are unsignalized intersections, and so what we've, which really don't don't have an overall volume to capacity ratio because of the through movement, which is heavy, is not subject to traffic control. So there's really no meaning to an overall level of service. So what the asterisk represents is that we're just looking at the southbound approach. That is the side road approach to Loudon Road. And you can see that those are operating at favorable levels of service, Bs, at Old Loudon Road, and 22% VC, which means it's close to 80% remaining capacity in that approach. And then at the site driveway itself, of course, is practically nil traffic in the current condition. During the peak hours, we're seeing anywhere from one to maybe eight or 10 trips coming out of Break-A-Day Drive, into or out of Break-A-Day Drive. So when you add the 200 and 300 trips associated with this project, it's obviously going to make an impact there, but it's still acceptable level of service. D for that approach, 61% utilization, again, leaving another 30-odd, 30 to 40-odd percent capacity in that intersection. That's where we have the greatest traffic impacts. But the impacts, of course, are inside Break-A-Day Drive. So that's where queuing would be, that's where the delays are. The right turn move experiences very little delay. What's being represented there is delays due to the left turn move. But we've done a gap study that shows there's lots of gaps, and that traffic can, by and large, get out. This has been reviewed by the city's traffic reviewer. And we have some technical questions about, you know, how best to analyze this intersection. But we feel comfortable that however that's resolved will not affect the conclusions and the basic numbers that I'm showing here tonight. And then as you've moved farther north up Loudon Road, that intersection is essentially unaffected by traffic. C and .60 in both no build and build condition. The interchange, minor effects due to turning traffic, an increase in turning traffic mostly. And then finally, at the westbound movements, a similar situation, favorable A levels of service overall and substantial reserve capacity in the build condition associated with Phase 1. We also looked at this briefly in connection with Phase 2, just to see what would happen when that phase of the project was to come along. And frankly, the numbers don't change very much. The, starting at the upper right, a 69% VC goes to 73%, 69 to 75, 60 to 67, 61 to 59, and so on. So there are minor impacts, even with Phase 2, future year, 2034. So I think the, first of all, go over the recommended improvements of Phase 1, and then I'll summarize. We're proposing to widen Break-A-Day Drive to, at a right turn pocket, reconstruct the entire length of Break-A-Day Drive, add a turnaround at the end of Break-A-Day Drive, which it doesn't really have any formal turnaround at this point. And in addition, as Nick has shown you, provide an emergency-only access to the site for the event of emergencies. So in summary, we're talking about traffic impacts being minimal overall. All intersections in the study area operate at favorable levels of service in opening and future years. All intersections remain with substantial reserve capacity in the build condition in future years. Additional queuing and delays minimal at all intersections. And to the extent there is additional queuing, it's something in the order of five to nine cars on Break-A-Day Drive, a reasonable amount. There are no sight distance issues, going back to the previous slide, on Loudon Road. It's a long, straight section of road, mostly signalized intersections. And there's essentially no sight distance restrictions at all in the study area. The crash experience does not show any elevated levels at any of the studied intersections. There are some technical questions, as alluded to in Heather's staff report, but in my opinion, these are all peripheral matters. They will not affect the basic conclusions of the report. And we've not, unfortunately, had the opportunity to meet with Jason Plore, the city's reviewer, to go over these questions, but I have no doubt that we will. He is a very thorough reviewer, but also a very reasonable reviewer. And I'm sure we can reach a meeting of the minds in regard to his conclusions. And I think that these conclusions will stand. Again, Break-A-Day Drive will be reconstructed and widened. There is no, unfortunately, I suppose in one sense, it doesn't meet signal warrants in Phase 1, so there's really nothing else that can be done to mitigate traffic impacts there. Of course, we're now, we're talking about traffic impacts of a public intersection that essentially has no traffic now, so anything is an impact. But the impacts are reasonable. Signal warrants are not met. They are required to be met before you put in a signal. They are not met for Phase 1 traffic levels, but likely will be met in Phase 2. And at that time, the signal will be considered and proposed if appropriate. So that is the report on traffic.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to segue real quick just to where we're at with our state permits. And I imagine there may be some questions, either from the board or the audience, that we'll need to address. So there were a few permits that were discussed at the last meeting, one of which is our filing with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources. They're responsible for anything of, you know, historical context on site. There was some mention of pre-American, pre-Native American contact in this area, that there was a Native American burial ground somewhere surrounding it. I can say that we've received a response from them that is in the affirmative that there are no historical properties impacted by this project. So we have a clean bill of health relative to any of those concerns. Next, the NHDS wetlands permit. We received a response from them, I think it was just last week, asking us to clarify our mitigation, and otherwise that permit is approved. We had sought to utilize a City of Concord project for the purposes of our mitigating, mitigation for our impacts. Unfortunately, the Army Corps of Engineers, who's responsible for approving those, shut both those down. So we do have to do an in-loofe payment, which goes into the Aquatic Resource Management Fund, for which the city could certainly solicit funds from in the future. The last permit is in regards to our alteration of train permit. We did receive a handful of comments, which we're in the process of responding to, as well as the city engineering comments, some of which dovetailed. We had the opportunity to review those comments with the AOT reviewer, feel we have resolution on all of them, and would have the expectation that we would have that permit shortly thereafter. So relative to our state permits, I think we're in very good standing at this point. I'll close the formal portion of our presentation, and our team is here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Yeah, so, help me out with this traffic. Because I'm reading, and I probably am not reading it correctly because I'm not a traffic engineer. So the Planning Commission, in its report by Mr. Henninger, says, "All trips are considered primary trips in an estimated number of trips in a weekday of, as 5,078, and as a weekend as 6,689." And then it goes on in the next page to talk about where that traffic is going to go, and it accounts for about 35% of the traffic heading, because it's a regional report heading to Loudon, Pembroke, and Chichester. But that leaves 65% headed back into Concord or west, which it doesn't actually talk about. So could you talk in numbers of actual cars versus this? Which reminds me of my statistics classes.
Can I make a comment? So we just received the RPC report, I think it was yesterday.
Okay.
So I have not forwarded that to them yet. I just haven't had a chance to do that. So that's kind of part of the sort of outstanding issues for resolving.
Thank you.
Like, we only just recently got the Pembroke today report. So feel free to answer the question, but I just wanted to acknowledge that you have not seen the RPC report, because we literally just got it yesterday.
I briefly glanced at it on the way over here, knowing that it existed.
So you saw it on the agenda?
I saw it on the agenda.
Because I knew I didn't send it to you.
Yep, nope, you didn't. So, yeah, we caught a little flat-footed on that one. But relative to the answers, I think what we can hearken back to is how this process of a traffic study takes place. And that goes back to the scoping meeting. So maybe that's the best way we could answer that, Bob.
Well, I think the specific answer to your question is, the RPC report apparently is talking in terms of daily trips, as opposed to, these are peak hour trips. When you're looking at an intersection, you're generally talking in terms of peak hour. And in fact, segments. So, you know, it's a more in-depth look. And one of the things that's somewhat unusual with charitable gaming facility or entertainment venues in general, is that they have more traffic spread throughout the day, so the daily numbers are higher relative to the peak hour numbers than they are in other types of uses. For example, a coffee shop, you know, it all happens between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning. And the rest of the day, there's hardly any. So there's not a big difference between the daily trips and the peak hour trips. But in a situation like this, where there's, you know, reasonably consistent numbers throughout the day, the daily numbers are higher. But other than a statistic, it really is not used in traffic analysis. The peak hour numbers are used in traffic analysis.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Quick question. I was up there today and walking around, met all your blue-tinted tenants.
Yeah.
They had a lot to say.
They do have a lot to say.
They had a lot to say. But I had two questions. One was the traffic situation. You know, I was the only car on the road today, and I had four-wheel drive because I went all the way down to the Hammerhead, and it's.
It's rough.
It's wet. But secondly, on my way out, I got stuck behind a flatbed trailer coming out of the Sleeper. I don't know what it's called now, but it used to be Sleeper. And he was trying to turn left. Now, I know you're going to address some of the road width issues, and I think I heard you say that there is going to be a right turn lane.
Yes.
But he got stuck at the end of that road trying to go left towards 393, and I was stuck behind him. And it was, we just happened to be in one of those situations. We couldn't get out. And it was a fairly large truck, so I couldn't get around him. He had his signal on, but I couldn't get out. Now, I'm thinking, at some point, have you told me tonight that there's going to be a light there, or there's going to be some intersection issue addressed to left turners coming out of that little road?
Let me say what we are doing. On Phase 1, we're, again, we would, we can't really entertain putting a signal there because you have to meet signal warrants, warrants with an S. You have to meet typically a couple of signal warrants before a signal can be installed at any intersection. And the thresholds are fairly high. So, you know, having a lot of traffic coming out at the peak hour just doesn't necessarily grant you permission to put up a signal. So there is, the Phase 1 traffic doesn't rise to the level that would justify a signal. But what we, the first thing we're doing is widening the existing left turn lane, because right now, and there are obviously a lot of long trucks coming in and out of that intersection, they can't really make it without occupying the whole roadway.
They take the whole road.
Exactly. So we're going to widen it, and what this shows, and I don't know if I can zoom in enough here to show you what we're doing, but the.
Just below that.
Yeah. The truck now, an exiting truck can turn within the paved limits without encroaching on the right turn lane there. So he can get out without interfering with incoming traffic. And since there's not enough width for him to get out without blocking the right turn lane, then right turning traffic can get around it. And that's where, as was just pointed out, much of this traffic is going back towards the City of Concord. A lot of right turn movements will be able to slip out, even if there's a truck parked there waiting to make a left.
But anybody trying to make a left has to cross two lanes of tra, four lanes.
Four lanes of traffic, right.
Four lanes of traffic. And that was where he got stuck. He eventually, he eventually was courteous to me and turned right and let me out.
Right.
But I was the only car on the road. You're going to have, I mean, there's, I can envision 10 cars behind him, or 20 cars stuck behind him trying to turn left.
We have analyzed that intersection to, you know, to see exactly what will happen in future years. And that's one of the points of, I would say, difference of opinion between us and the reviewer about how traffic will handle that intersection. And there's several ways to look at it. You know, vehicles whose ultimate destination is west can make that right turn, even if they want to go north of 93 or south of 93, they can go down to, you know, there's two roadways, Portsmouth Street and East Side Drive, that would bring you back to 293. And I checked on Google, and the travel times are almost identical. So there, you know, for that large portion of traffic that is heading in those directions, they have, you know, relatively unobstructed.
And there's no argument there at all. I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree with you. And maybe by the fact that you're going to widen that road, that.
It'll help trucks.
That will back up, because you've got people coming out of Sleeper, and they're all big, it's big stuff coming out of that road right now.
It's the chow tractor now, and that's what they're selling. They're selling tractors and.
And it's, and it's heavy. And so, I just, as I said, that was my experience today, with one truck and one car trying to go, and he was going left, and there was no me going anywhere.
Yeah. Well, we show that it's going to operate favorably with these widens. It's going to make a big difference for Phase 1. And then, you know, should Phase 2 go ahead, then, you know, there'd be a signal there, and that would resolve the delay issue.
Okay.
Once and for all.
All right. And a second question for you is that today was very warm, and there's a lot of snow still up on that property. So the water, the water levels, it was almost standing water in certain parts as you went back towards the Hammerhead, the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
But it was really muddy. But the point was, my only question really is, because there's going to be so much impervious surface up there at some point, a lot more than there is right now, there's that one little roundabout that turns off to the left there, but where the, your tenants are. But there was a lot of water in that, I mean, it was full, the gully. So now we're going to have more water. The only thing I'm asking is, have you had a conversation with the city in terms of the existing infrastructure, water infrastructure, that you're going to connect to? Is that adequate to support how much water I saw there today?
Sure. So are we talking about water as in stormwater, correct?
Stormwater, snow melt, you're going to have huge snow, all that water that was there today is going to be more.
So one of the, one of the things that's tough is the irregularity of Break-A-Day Drive right now. You have lots of areas where it can pond. Stormwater isn't correctly being conveyed. You know, what are your best roads look like? They have a nice crown to them. You have discharge off of that road, whether it's into Catch Basin or a swale or otherwise. The reconstruction of the road provides that. So we no longer will have the mess of a road that is there now. It'll be well-defined. It'll be a city-mandated crown. It'll discharge into the appropriate receptors as far as the.
That's my question. I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
And relative to that.
That water is, can the existing structures, that the city facilities, absorb all that water?
It can.
Okay.
And we're actually improving it. So we, for a good case example, we look at our 100-year storm. We're decreasing the peak rate of runoff by 5 CFS. It's a lot of water that we're taking out of that municipal system. So in all year storms, we either show a reduction in the peak rate of runoff, or at least meeting it, and where we're meeting it's actually in the smaller year storms, like a two-year storm, where you typically don't see a lot of runoff. So from a stormwater management standpoint, you'll see improvements to all of the stormwater being discharged to the municipal system.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir.
Lauren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question. One of the concerns that was raised by the Regional Planning Commission in its report was the impact of the project on the appeal, Concord's appeal, the appeal of the gateway on 393. And I know that you showed sidelines, Nick, and everything, but one thing that was conspicuously absent was signage. I know that signage is not part of this application currently, but signage can have a significant impact. So anything you can tell us about? So, uh, anything you can tell us about your plans for signage? Two-hundred-feet-high, neon, what?
No. Um, appreciate the, uh, the commentary, but no, as far as neon, two-hundred-feet-high.
Well, I've been to Mississippi, and I've seen other casinos.
Fair enough, fair enough. But this is Concord, and I think one of the things that Andy has done very well-
Well, right now it is.
What he's conveyed, what Andy's conveyed very well is his intent to pay homage to Concord and New England, and to make sure that is in keeping with the expectations of the city and our community. We will have a signage vendor who will be addressing those items. That's obviously going to go to ADR, and then obviously to yourselves as well. As for signage, I do not have an update that I can provide as to what would be provided. But, uh, the commentary is valid, and we'll make sure that it's in keeping with expectations.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate you conveying, you know, Andy's intent. Andy is, are you here representing Big Step LLC? Are you the principal?
Um, I'm actually not. So, so the property is currently under a, um, we have an option on the land. So Big Step LLC is actually a probate property, as you may know. So as part of this approval process that we have the land under an option to purchase, we are obligated under that PNS to seek the approvals before we close. So I guess technically I am representing them, but I do not have ownership of it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. It's getting late. I'm zoning here. Jeff.
I'll try and keep it concise and quick as I can. So I know Mr. Plort is reviewing the traffic study. You know, Mr. Duval, you said something tonight that kind of struck with me. If people can't make a left out and they're bound for I-93, they're going to make a right out. Your study shows twelve outs, rights out, which then continue down Loudoun Road. Well, if they can't make the left out because, unsignalized during the future condition, you're a level of service E. When you just said, oh, we don't have much impact, you go from a B or A with very little traffic to an E. E's, I wouldn't consider a good condition. D, I could probably argue, not bad. E, no. And then I'm wondering, I'm concerned with how much more traffic now is then going to say, hey, it's easier for me to make a right out, head down Loudoun Road and head to Eastside Drive, as you said. Well, if you've been on Eastside Drive, that's a nasty couple of intersections to get back on three ninety-three at that location. So I do have some concern with that, and, and I looked at your signal warrant analysis, and your four-hour warrant was only done for three hours. I know Mr. Plort has asked you to do an eight-hour warrant. I would say you need to reevaluate the four-hour warrant as well, if you're going to have the traffic volumes to account for eight, because you did three, four, and five o'clock, or four, five, and six o'clock. What happens at seven o'clock? What happens at two o'clock? Are the volumes at that point still high enough to trigger the four-hour warrant, which then would potentially necessitate a signal under phase one? So I would ask, as part of your reevaluation with Mr. Plort's comments, that you look at that. Other than that really in the traffic, um, I would say that if you think in phase two that you're going to need a traffic signal, I think any conduit, anything that's needed across Breakaway Drive gets put in under phase one, so you don't have to dig that road back open. I think that's reasonable, couple of pu- pull boxes, conduit, whatever is needed. And at least generally, what the mast arm locations would be, so that you know you're not impacting sightlines, sidewalks, turn radiuses, other things. I think Mr. Plort is asked to see turning templates here. Um, I think that's reasonable, given that you want a left-turn lane with the large trucks, and then potentially the right-turn lane. You want to be able to make sure cars are getting in it. Um, I, on the site, this is going to have an, is the entertainment venue phase two?
Phase two.
I would make sure that when you develop that, where's your bus parking? Most of your venues, they come in buses. So you right now have all car parking, and you've generated for that, so there should be designated bus spots, or if you know you're overparked, then maybe there are spots that are reserved during the venue events, for no parking by staff or whatever, something so we have a comfort level, they're not going to park on the end of Breakaway Drive out of the way. Lastly, um, thank you for the DOT letter. Um, I did note one sentence under number one that I think we need to be cognizant of. Um, and that's when Mr. Cass states, "This would still leave a buffer for I-390 and shield the adjoining property." The intent is not to cut the hill down, cut trees down, so your site is visible from three ninety-three in the limited access right-of-way. Now, DOT buys the property. They buy land, air, and view rights. So I would like to see, you know, your renderings show no trees. I would like to see a photorealistic rendering of what would be the trees that would still be within the right-of-way shielding what's going to be the building. So we have an under, some, I know you can't really do it where the hill completely comes down, but there is some, and, um, I'd like to get a better feel, because a lot of those views are deceiving, because they show these little, like, three-foot shrubs everywhere. In reality, I just was on Street View, and there's twenty, thirty, forty-foot trees out there. I think it would be helpful for the public to understand. I don't want them to get a misrepresentation that you're cutting all the trees down, and that's what it's going to look like in the end, because it's not, um, really realistic. I echo, I am concerned with signage and how that's going to be. I know you're not proposing the actual signs, but if you could maybe consider, if you know at least block-wise, hey, we know we're going to have a sign here, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but this is where it would be on the building. I think that gives us a much better feel, as the board, what those sightlines are and kind of how that would impact. And I think your cut-through does not cut through the biggest hill that you're cutting, your rendering sightline. You cut it through the existing where you're pretty much not cutting anything. I think DOT had asked also for one through the cutting, so they could visualize what the impacts were.
They were provided that.
Something that we can do as well, because they stated they want us to be kind of the approval before they give you kind of the okay to move forward. So it'd be nice if they're getting information on what it's going to look like in the future, what it is. This board is getting that same to make a decision.
Those are all fair points, and I'll, I'll point out, um, so I sat down with Sophie, one of our graphic designers, and we're, we're working through the sightlines and looking at the different elements. And she turns on all the trees, and everything disappears. I don't see anything. I was like, well, that's good, there's, because I'll be able to show that, you know, this is what you're going to look at. But the reality is, we always have to think case scenario, okay? What if these are, are trees that their leaves have dropped, and we can see through? What's the worst-case scenario? So the manner in which we developed our graphics for the purposes of, of this meeting was to show that, you know, the worst-case scenario. All right, say we have a giant storm and all those trees got knocked down. What's the worst thing you could possibly see? And I think it's going to be a very attractive building, but from the standpoint of what's the most visible this could ever be, was the intent of those graphics. We can certainly turn the trees back on.
Yeah, I just don't, I just for the public's perspective, I don't want them to get, because I'm a lot, I'm sure a lot of them are concerned. What is this going to look like? What are we going to see from three ninety-three? What are we going to see from the adjacent properties? I just want them to get a little feeling that this is not a clear-cut opportunity, and that's what's going to be out there. I want them to feel comfortable.
That's fair. The other part of that is, that would be phase two. So we know-
Understood.
Another, another bite at the apple, and ideally that we're being a very successful business, and we have the opportunity to come back and show you what we're-
True, but all your grades for the entire site are being dictated under phase one.
Sure.
So if there's any opportunity to adjust, phase one would be what it is, because once you've got the building there, there's no more changing the site.
And we have master plan that, so I can provide some-
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I think it would be helpful. Um, and that's it. I know there's some other ongoing reviews by staff.
I'd, I'd like all sorts of, answer your questions or comments about the traffic. And number one, um, I thought I was careful to say that on Break-a-Day Drive itself, there is obviously more degradation of service, and that's because we've got, you know, one or two or five trips, so that you could put a popcorn stand there.
Understood.
It would degrade the level of service there. Secondly, um, we didn't have the hourly counts to, um, to do the eight-hour warrant, but we, we, uh, anticipated that comment, um, talking to, um, Jason, and we have ordered the twelve-hour counts that we'll need to, so we'll be able to do one, four, eight-hour counts. And number three, as to, there's many ways to slice how traffic will turn, there's many ways to get from point A to point B, uh, from Break-a- Day Drive. We thought we'd, by favoring more left turns, that was a worst-case scenario in terms of overall delay. So that's what we did in that initial report, but we do intend to do alternative cases, showing what would happen if more traffic, if all traffic that could turn right turned right, uh, you know, if it was a three-way split or whatever. We're going to look at that as a sensitivity analysis.
That'd be great. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I, can I, I wanted, I wanted to echo what Jeff was saying about, about the cuts being through, I made a similar comment about needing to see additional cuts through the elevation. I wanted to see, you know, they showed from the highway, but they didn't show, like, the front of the site or through the center of the site. I also mentioned, you know, they're not, they haven't shown us any of these elevations with the massing of the phase-two buildings. So I think that's something we need to see as well, with the hotel and the parking structure there, you know, the relationship of the grading to the buildings to Loudoun Road and the highway. And I think we want to see right straight through there what, what, what that's going to look like.
Madam Chair, if I could, just one other thing of staff is, we still have not seen the off-site plan. That was not in the package.
What do you mean, the off-site plan?
Breakaway Drive reconstruction, how that's all being done.
Okay.
Should, that was, that was provided.
It should be in there.
It's, uh, three of the last four sheets in the set. OS one, two, three.
Part of the problem we, we may be having, Nick, is the size of the plans that you're sending are so massive that they're not able to be, uh, so if you could shrink them down, I might have removed a sheet.
We have. I'm going to give Jose a hard time, because he keeps having me add plans to the set, but understood.
No, I apologize, there was. I, I pulled the one up on the site. Some reason the one I had on my, that I pulled down the other day.
I tried to leave the whole thing in there, but there was just, the size of it was so large, and it, it really needs to be shrunk so that it can all fit.
So if I could as a follow-up real quick on that, you show a driveway to Chapel-
Tractor.
Chapel Tractor at Station Five that has a telephone pole in the middle of it?
That's been updated. So the existing curb cut was mislocated, and has since been revised.
Okay. Because I know there's not a lot of survey info on that side in terms of the pod units that are out there and some other things.
Trucks that are just-
We've provided all of the survey information within the right-of-way, to make sure that we can tie out grades appropriately. Um, we are also trying to work with their engineer to make sure that the improvements on Break-a-Day Drive aren't going to be a detriment to their operations, knowing also that they have, you know, potential improvement plans that they're pursuing as well. One thing I wanted to jump back to, if I could, is, um, when we've had, we've gone through these meetings with the board thus far, you know, we've, we've shown different elements of sightlines. Relative to phase two, and I think there was, it's recorded in the notes, that, you know, we provided certain elements relative to the comprehensive development plan to make sure there was a comfort level. What we, was just mentioned as far as building massing and, and renderings for phase two is very much something we anticipate coming back for. I'm trying to find an appropriate median between what we're proposing for approval, which is phase one, and then us take, making guesswork at phase two. I don't want to represent something, nor does our team, that isn't factual or a hundred percent accurate. There are no, there's building footprints, there's no formal design for those structures. I'm very apprehensive to try and show that level of information.
But you could just show boxes. You don't have to show any architectural features at all. And I know you don't even know, um, how big the hotel or the parking structure is going to be, but, you know, I, I think clicking two stories and then click three stories, and then show, you know, how, what, what do you think? Is it two? Is it three? Is it four? You know, you could show some options to say, this is what it would look like, you know, if, based on these different scenarios. I mean, the hard part of the whole thing is really the grading cut through, through it. It's not placing a structure there. So I, I think it's valuable and important. I, I know you're, it's part of phase two, but it's all of a piece. You know, the whole thing comes, sort of comes together, and that, no, but really, I feel that nobody really knows what, how that, what that's going to look like yet without having those cuts. I appreciate the ones you did provide-
Okay, good.
-because those were helpful for me when I looked at them, and I was like, okay, now I understand this little piece. But there's a lot of other pieces that are not, that are not showing.
And we have that ability now, because we've designed phase one. Phase two is schematic. I, I don't know that I can show the level of detail you're requesting.
The only reason I say that is because on your west, your planned view, I-393 eastbound, which is supposedly phase one, you see, you show taking the hill out of three ninety-three.
Correct. Because that was our specific request of ADR, they wanted to see what that would look like.
Right.
So we provided that to them.
So I guess, but the cut you gave them was not through, the sightline you gave wasn't through where the cut was, it was through the existing. So you didn't need to show that grading outside, within DOT right-of-way.
Um, the approach views that we also provided do show that grading element. So that was the idea, is we were trying to provide, as you're driving down three ninety-three, this is what you're going to see, and at what point can you actually potentially see the facility? So I, I realize it maybe sounds a little convoluted, but it was the nature of what they asked us to show, so that they could better understand when that grade comes down, what could they expect to see relative to what we have designed now. Again, there's just a little bit of apprehension to show future phases when we don't have definition on them.
If I could follow up, when do you expect to go to the DOT to get approval to do something in the right-of-way? Under this phase or future phase?
Future phase.
Okay. I just want, that's, I guess, where my hesitation is. I want to make sure-
No, that's, that's fair. Um, and I, I wanted to clarify, and it was something we said to ADR, and maybe I didn't mention it at the opening here, is that that grading doesn't facilitate sightline. It facilitates the ability to build parking without retaining walls. That's the intent of that exercise. Otherwise, we end up with very large walls adjacent to three ninety-three, and that was part of the rationale. They said, yeah, this is a public betterment. Why do we want to put a bunch of retaining walls here? And we have this, all this stormwater runoff that goes to three ninety-three. You want to regrade it and push it towards your site and manage it for us? Fantastic.
And I'm not, I, I, I understand, and I don't have a problem with you working with the DOT to that point. I just want the intent of it to be not to suddenly open up the whole site so you can see the entire site along the entire three ninety-three.
We are working as diligently as possible to be as efficient with the construction. I, honestly, there aren't funds to take down that slope right now. Um, I can be perfectly honest, and hopefully I'm not talking out of school, Andy. I apologize if I am. But, you know, we're, we're trying to build as efficient a project here to be successful now, so that we have the opportunity to build upon this in the future.
And, and Madam Chair and members of the committee, and while I, while I appreciate Heather's request about, can you just provide blocks? As you may know, since there have been several hotels, you've been in the process of approving here from the, several different franchisees. Um, they all have very different boxes. Some are narrow and very tall, some are long and short. And not knowing who it's going to be, because it truly is phase two, um, I, I just respect the request that there are dozens upon dozens of different-sized boxes that could be presented to you without knowing which one would be real. And we won't know that until we make the presentation for, for phase two.
You done, Jeff?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. We're all losing it here. Matt?
Thank you. Um, this is a question, I think, for staff. How many, so Chapel Tractor, how many driveways are they allowed on Break-a-Day Drive? Because looking at the map here, it looks a wild west of.
It is. There is no defined driveway.
Well, they, they.
That's what I'm seeing.
Chapel Tractor is in the process, I believe, of submitting their own application for site improvements.
Okay.
And so narrowing some of those driveways is gonna be part of that application. They're grant, you know, they, they have existing driveways. So your question about how many are they allowed?
Yeah.
They're allowed, you know, technically, those, those are the ones that are there. But as part of the review process, we will, we may ask them to close certain driveways or, you know, so we'll evaluate that when that comes.
Okay, so is there an original site plan that I could find?
An original site? What do you mean, an original?
For Chapel.
For, well, what was sleeper before that and whatever it was before that, for that site?
Still not understanding your question.
He's wondering, what were the original permitted driveways?
You want an existing, you want an existing conditions plan for Chapel Tractor.
Yeah, well.
There may be something, there may be, I'm sure I could find you something.
Okay.
If I understand, Matt, what you're curious about is what were the permitted driveways part of the pool? Because it just suddenly turned into one big open one.
There's, there's been quite a bit of creep on that site in terms of access and how it's been used, so.
Encorement in the city right-of-way.
Look at the G I S aerials from, there's 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015, 2020. You can, you can see how it's changed over 20 years.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Okay. In that case, are there folks from the audience who wish to speak? Because it is going on 11, and a lot of you want to speak, I'd like everyone to keep their comments to five minutes, please. And if people before you have said what you want to say, come up and say, I agree with so-and-so rather than repeating it all in the interests of all of us being able to get up and go to work tomorrow. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
I apologize for the horse throat. Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Judith Kurtz. I'm a resident of Concord and co-director of Concord Green Space. C G Three is how I'll refer to us throughout my testimony. We have several concerns regarding the proposed casino complex. We have received over 150 petition signatures in opposition to the plans with comments and concerns. We'll leave them here for your review. And that, it was 150 at the time I printed this, they've been streaming in at about 10 an hour since then. So we will forward the rest of them to you via email. In the spirit of not repeating things, we share many of the concerns of the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission as outlined in the report dated February 13th, and those of the town of Pembroke in their letter to you today. A few things that we'll bring up specifically, we're concerned about the negative impact of the proposed casino complex on public safety and Concord's emergency services resources. We requested the police records for all calls to service in and around both the draft, the applicant's existing establishment, and Buffalo Wild Wings, a comparable establishment with no casino. From 2018 to 2022, there were 131 total calls to service from the draft, with 61 of those having a criminal or assault nature, versus 114 calls from Buffalo Wild Wings with 37 of those calls being of a criminal or assault nature. That's almost double the serious incident calls to the draft, which is a far smaller establishment. Additionally, those records ended before the latest two police-involved incidents at the draft. The first, a patron flashing a gun on October 27th, 2022. And two, a fight with fugitive arrest on January 22nd of this year. We request that you take the time to further review police reports, including those from similar casinos in neighboring towns such as Belmont and Manchester. Research shows that Concord will likely see an increase in alcohol-related fatal traffic accidents with this huge casino plan, and we have major concerns around traffic, public safety. We would like to know how the applicant is planning to address those. We are concerned that the current plans include an exception to the sidewalk rules, even as our zoning has such provisions to ensure new development aligns with our city's wonderful master plan. We are concerned that a community member who drove through the site brought to our attention that there is a gas line running across the lot, and there's been no mention that we can find of how that will be managed. We would like to see the applicant's plans to address these issues of public health, safety, and welfare issues in writing. Furthermore, we are very concerned about abandonment of yet another large-scale development on the heights, like the Steeplegate Mall. We feel the applicant should provide some assurance to the board that he will not abandon the project if it does not prove as lucrative as projected. The applicant does not seem to have provided any information about his financial ability to carry the project should the revenues not meet expectations. Has there been any information on the applicant's reserve funds or how much equity is he contributing? Does he intend to stay involved with the casino long-term? Or does he plan to sell to a larger, out-of-state corporation who does not share his commitment to a venue that is rich with New Hampshire culture and imagery as his initial application emphasizes? These things matter to the vision for Concord laid out in our master plan. This is a huge gambling facility. We are aware that the state of New Hampshire has established law such that local municipalities cannot legally prohibit casinos. We get it. Since we have to work within the law, we ask you to use the power that you have to limit the scale of this project. We don't have a market research study, and we have it from good sources, that this is considered a saturated market. Perhaps you could approve a limited number of gaming tables or seats in Phase One and then reevaluate the impact on the areas of concern, traffic, stormwater runoff, safe, public safety, et cetera. We'd like to know why the applicant plans to keep the draft open when this new, larger, better, in his words, facility opens. Finally, in Mr. Sandborn's initial proposal, he stated that he hoped to, quote, "create a gateway property as a welcome sign to those coming to visit or passing through Concord from the west or north." We ask you to consider Concord's master plan and its stated vision of making sure new development maintains and reinforces the historical land use in Concord by building up already-developed areas, infilling abandoned areas, and avoiding suburban-style developments. As this proposal depends on a large parking area and will not build sidewalks, it is establishing itself not as a part of a vibrant, walkable village, but yet another concrete edifice for the tourist bus and car-dependent, an inherently suburban vision. We know that your hands are tied and that your scope is limited. We understand that, yet we felt strongly that as this is the public hearing, we were obligated to speak up against this project as part of the democratic process and for the public record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Don't forget to sign in on the.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Carl Sargent, and I live in the last house on Portsmouth Street on the south side. And I have a couple, several things. First of all, need to look at two denials of, of applications. One was for a hotel to go in this general area. And it was denied because of the specific list of uses that could be put in that section and that. And then the next one was a strip mall. And the city turned that, the planning board turned that down because of the traffic congestion that it would cause in all those lights there. I don't know whether, I tried to get ahold of the city planner today to see if they've changed the original rules that were very specific, because they were very specific. They left out in that zone, there were no, to be no hotels specifically. They, they didn't put it in, but it was, they left it out intentionally. The next problem I see, and I heard that they said that 60% are gonna turn right, meaning going back toward Concord on Loudoun Road. And a lot of them, if, they're not gonna be all t-totals. A lot of them are gonna try to avoid Loudoun Road because, as you go down further, there's quite a good police presence by the Concord police, and you see how many people they stop in that section. So they're gonna take and go on to Old Loudoun Road, which he said had 60, 80% more capacity, but he didn't look at what comes out of the, the Mardi Drive and comes down and turns into Portsmouth Street. Portsmouth Street is a very narrow street. It has a lot of people walking on it, dog walkers, joggers, bicycles, bicycle clubs through the years. And it's, and sometimes it's very difficult to get down. And the mailboxes are out so close because people don't want to shovel a long way. So you have to kind of walk a little bit into the road, and there's only a foot and a half of, of, you know, asphalt. The only section that's not is where the state built the bridge over Portsmouth Street for 393, and that was widened out, has a nice wide shoulder, asphalt in that, and, and that. It's supposed to be 30 miles an hour. There's so much traffic comes through there that's way over 30 miles an hour. We'd like to see them get under 40. And that, and it's, and with all the pedestrians and all the things. And it's from early morning you can see people walking until after dark. So there's a potential for, you know, there. And there's no room for sidewalks, because that's one of the oldest streets, because it's the old Portsmouth Turnpike. And if some telephone poles were moved two inches back, they would be on my land and I'd be negotiating electrical prices in that. And that's how, it's little room they have, so they can't build easily a sidewalk without condemning a lot of land. And that, and, and where they say that 60% is gonna be turned toward Concord, and I've noticed a lot that comes out of that draft place in motorcycles, and you see distinctive vehicles, they don't go down Loudoun Road, they come down Old Loudoun Road, Portsmouth Street to avoid the police. And we have people with drinks and bar and draft beers and that. I think you're gonna find a lot more people on that, and we already are having a really difficult time. I have a difficult time getting out of my driveway at times. They swing around that corner so fast, I sometimes have to shift quick to get out of the way. Because they come around, and they're two-thirds the way on my side of the street. They should be on the other side of the street. In the winter, when I shovel, I have to run like mad so that I do not get hit by people coming down the road. I have to get into my driveway because my mailbox and that and the parachute are down a little bit beyond the, because I used to have trouble with people hitting mailboxes with mail, with bats and that. I figured if they did it, they were gonna hit a pole first. So I think our neighborhood is interested in not seeing all the extra traffic this would create to avoid Loudoun Road going toward Concord. Because they go down, and I followed a lot of them, they go down and then they turn down, and they only have one major stop, and they turn into Broken Ground Drives. They have to stop to go on to East Side Drive, and then they can go. And a lot of them are going there. They don't take 106 and go through the lights because they're so long to get on to 393. And some will go through, because I've had a number of projects that were sort of in the bus line, Canterbury and Salisbury area, and I'd followed them, and they would go all the way through, go to the traffic, and then go on to 393. So they're using this as a way to avoid lights and also police, police in that sometimes. And that's what, I would like to see, what the city's gonna do about that. We probably need to have police cars on the road all the time to prevent speeding there. We've had more presence since that couple was killed, but they're just driving through. And the only place that they actually check speeds is in that little parking lot right there by the power lines. And that's the one safe place that you can do for it and be safe, and everybody can be safe. And a lot of the other areas, it's not particularly safe. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Don't forget to sign.
I just wanted to address your comment. Hotels are permitted in the Gateway Performance District. I don't know when that changed or, or when it, but just so you know, that, that is the answer to that question. It is a permitted use.
Yeah, because that, I'd like to find out and see what the language is that changed. It was very definitely.
It's a table, it's a used table, and it says hotels. And then all of the districts are listed, and then in the table, it, it says it's permitted, so.
Okay, but in the original, and that's when that hotel went to be, to be there between 106 and 393. And they turn, and that's the hotel that you see just 100 feet over our border in Loudoun. It's a very nice, it's a very nice call of the end. And that, and that's why it got turned out, because it was not listed in that list. Now, maybe they've come up with a new chart and it's been approved. I'd like to see that, when it was approved.
I don't really answer to that question, I'll be honest.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sir. No, sorry, behind this gentleman. Oh, sign in, sir? Come back? Oh, he did already, okay. Thank you, sorry.
My name's Andrew Walton. I live 1.2 miles from this proposed structure. You folks are gonna hear from a lot of people that are gonna say a lot of things that aren't relevant. You shouldn't be weighing on the issue if a gentleman or a business owns a business in Concord if they're gonna keep it open or closed. If you want to do feasibility studies, use Bartwell-Bowen Alley, okay? Ask how many times the police been there. You can't compare two restaurants to a casino, okay? I thank you guys for serving. Don't send these people through unnecessary cost approach to make a project go forward. Don't compare the mall, which I helped sheetrock, to this proposal. Your job isn't to worry about if the mall's empty. You folks in and build the mall. You folks don't need to worry about if someone's gonna be successful or fail in business. If they go through the right channels, the right permit processing, you have to do what, you know, what they're here to accomplish. You gotta give them a chance. My opinion, Concord don't need no more banks. Concord don't need no more car washes. I've been around here since 1980. I've seen the city change. I've seen that mall go up. We've seen businesses be successful, we've seen businesses fail. We've seen restaurants open, we've seen restaurants close. That's not you guys' responsibility. So I can assure you, people are gonna come up here and testify to you guys things that aren't relevant to the proposal. I live right in the middle of 106 and 202 behind Macris Restaurant. Motorcycle weekend, motorcycles, race weekend, when there used to be 100,000 people up there, now there's only 60,000. Okay, I hear all that noise, but I put up with it, okay? You folks should give no weight onto what businesses are open, who's gonna keep a business open, or the mall for this proposal. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Thank you. I would just comment that we can't actually factor that into our deliberations.
Well, I know, you're gonna, I, I've served on boards, and I thank you all for personally serving. I know, like, you know, I've been at board meetings till 11, 12 o'clock, just like you folks. Thank you very much, you know, for serving, every last one of you. But you cannot give any weight to all the testimony and things that people are gonna say. That's not even relevant to that. It doesn't matter if every business on Loudoun Road closed, every business on Main Street closed. You guys can't give no weight to that. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving the city of Concord. I appreciate every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in. This gentleman's had his hand up for a while.
Good evening. You guys look all as tired as me. My name is Norm Levek. I'm one of, my wife and I are one of the butters listed on the, one of the documents of the cover sheet of the drawings. We live on Josiah Bartlett Road. We are the next property on the same side as Break-A-Day Drive as this proposed place, but on the other side of the highway. So if the map was up, I could point it right out to you, but. I was reading through minutes of the last meeting because I wasn't able, able to come to it. And there was a discussion about the wetlands on this property and the culvert that runs under 393. And that culvert starts on my side, right at the back end of my property. I looked at the wetlands report or study that was posted on the, the planning board website, and it shows a, trying to think, the drainage area on the north side of the highway that contributes to that, what goes through that culvert. And I read through as much as I, that I could understand, and, you know, it said that they went with a model that was on the conservative side, and, and looking at it, they have a lot of my property in the area that is in the watershed that I don't think is actually in the watershed. Because I walk my property a lot, and even though I've got some wet areas on my property, there's, there's a ridge that comes across my property, and it slopes down as it approaches the highway, and it's, it's like a high point. So that, I think that part of it doesn't really get into that. However, I've been in that area where the culvert is, and I've seen that culvert actually overflowed on the high side. So my only concern is, for me, it's not a big deal because, you know, I'm about eight feet higher than the other side of the highway, so it's all gonna go eventually. But when you get, in the times that I've seen it like that, is usually in early, well, this time of year, when the ground's frozen and we get a heavy rain for a day or two, I, I, I tap some of my maple trees in the back of my property, and that's why I'm out there this time of year. And I've seen, you know, the water flow. So it doesn't really concern me. It might concern what happens on the other side of the highway. So I just wanted to mention that because I was looking at the, you know, the plans in the area that was going to be reduced and where the water comes out at, you know, and where the floor level of the building is. It's only about four feet above that culvert, at least the way that I, I read the plan. So I, I wanted to mention that because it could be a concern. The other things that concern me, living where I do, is, one would be potential noise. Now, you could say, okay, well, I live right next to a highway. Well, that kind of dwindles down as the evening gets, goes on. There isn't really much noise after 7 o'clock. There's, you know, the traffic really gets reduced on the highway more as the evening goes on. goes on. And I'm often, I take my dogs out, and I go outside with my dogs. Every time they go out, and I stay out with them the whole time they're out, and I'm really aware of how much noise there is, because we're really close. But as the evening goes on, that noise dwindles down. I'm a little concerned with, you know, hours running till 1 o'clock in the morning, a potential noise. It really carries across the highway, because it's all open space. When E.W. Sleeper had the property with Chapel Tractor now has, they'd be up at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. I'd hear equipment over there, running, dropping plows or whatever they're dropping. It's a little, it's a little quieter with Chapel Tractor. We do still hear noise, you know, from their equipment being moved around. It does carry over. There, I was kinda shocked one day when I went out, and, you know, after Chapel Tractor bought it, and they put up a new sign, this big white sign. All I see from my house is this big white block. I don't actually see any, you know, anything on the side. But it was really kind of stark, because I don't know what Sleeper had for a sign before, but I never noticed it. So, when you folks talk about signage, that could be something that would be important to me, depending on where the sightline is. Oh, getting back to noise, I noticed on the plan for this facility that on the highway side, which would be facing me, there are transformer pads and maybe a dumpster location on that side. So, I'm a little concerned about, you know, any kind of noise that could carry over. Those are the type of things that would concern me. And if there's any kind of screen or something that could be put up to minimize the effect, I would appreciate that. I'm also concerned about, as the parking, especially if it, well, the Phase 1 plan has a parking area on the east side of the building, which is the side that faces the Break a Day Drive. Even though there's a large lot closer to Loudoun Road, there's another lot that runs up the side of the building. I'm a little concerned about the lighting, whatever lighting's gonna be lighting up those parking spaces, that it doesn't spread out too far. And another thing that I'm worried about is, I've seen so many crazy things where I live, through the construction, any, I know on my side of the highway, there's a fence that runs along, you know, I guess where the right of way is, and it's a fence, it's about maybe four feet high. And when they did, years ago, maybe like 15 years ago or so, when they came through and put a new gas line down Josiah Bartlett and across underneath the highway, we were told that they were going to, you know, rebuild the fence and put the trees back and everything, which didn't happen. The fence that they put up was this little gimpy, like, three-foot-high fence, and it was only a matter of time before the thing was falling down. I've seen, from the end of Josiah Bartlett to over to Break a Day Drive, I've seen snowmobiles cross there, I've seen people walk across, I've seen kids that were probably in their young teens, I've seen it cross on bicycles there. I even saw once a truck come down to the end of the road, look, figure out where he's going, and he just went through and get on the highway from our road. So, my concern is that there's some good fencing put up along, you know, the boundary of the highway to stop that kind of thing from happening, since there's gonna be work done, and I believe there's an existing fence there now. I could be wrong. Those are the things that concern me the most. One thing that I have a question on, I'm not sure if any of you can answer it, but I read, and this will be my last thing. I read in the minutes toward the end of the, well, just before the public comments, that a couple of people on the board here mentioned that the, all the uses being applied for are permitted uses. And when I look up the table, I've looked up the table of uses, and I can see restaurant and hotel and parking structures as an accessory. I don't see anywhere on this at a gaming facility or casino in this table. Yeah?
It's actually called an indoor recreation.
I'm sorry?
It's considered indoor recreation. So, that is one of the uses on the table, indoor recreation.
Well, it says, I think what it says is indoor recreation. Commercial indoor recreational facilities, including bowling alleys, billiard halls, and similar uses? That's considered a similar use?
That was the determination of the zoning.
I'm sorry?
That was the determination of zoning, of code.
All right, that's it. And if anyone has a question, or?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'll talk quickly, because we all wanna go to bed. So, I'm gonna start by talking about one of the issues I have is with traffic.
Did you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry about that. Cassie Cameron. I live probably the closest to Pembroke-Tychester line of Concord. I'm right by Cole Gardens, off of Old Dover Road, so I'm .4 miles away from the proposed building site. I would propose that traffic is not going to be minimally impacted. I work from home, and I probably on the road more often than people that are just commuting to work and back. I bring my kids to school every morning and pick them up, and there are people on the road at all different times. We have the dirt doctor down 106. We have paving companies over here, so we have construction workers that start very early in the morning, that come in later in the evening, maybe a little bit before your regular rush hour traffic comes in. And so, these are large vehicles that are coming and going, and the lights over right after you get off of Exit 3, those can be really long lights with lots of people backed up with the traffic we have right now, not including anything additional. So, I would think that it would be more than just minimally impacted by adding a destination to this area. I do like that they said they wanted to do a 12-hour study, because I think that would be a better indication of what is going on there, because the traffic patterns aren't typical, I think, because of the different types of coming and going in that area. Anyone that's gone past Cole Gardens and heading towards EPSE knows that, you know, come 3:00 to 4:00 in the evening, it is gridlock traffic going that way. You will just basically sit there. And so, I can't imagine that bringing in something that's going to draw in more people is going to help that situation at all, at the very least, not minimally. And with Phase 2, I know it's difficult to talk about things when a phase isn't completed, but they want to add an event venue. Anyone that's ever been to a sporting event or concert knows, as soon as it gets out, everyone is rushing out, all the cars lined up, with there not even being a signal right there. I don't know about you, but just dropping off kids at school in Concord, the lines are crazy, and it's, people don't wanna let you go. So, when you have other people that don't live in the city that you're not gonna have to see, you're probably less likely to be nice and let them go ahead of you, so no one's gonna stop. I take and go down Loudoun to bring my kids to school over at Millbrook and Broken Ground, and we go down and go off of Old Loudoun Road. And just coming off Old Loudoun Road to turn and go back towards my house, I can be sitting there for a full five minutes, because no one lets me go. And there's so many level, so many lines of traffic that I have to cross to get down that way. And while they do say that they think that most people are going to be going right down Loudoun, anyone that's been down Loudoun during, you know, a busy time of day knows that you have people that are stopping to turn to the apartments. That means that the traffic's going to stop. There's only so much space down Loudoun Road. The more cars you have, it's just gonna be a standstill. And there are a ton of lights. It's not going to be the fastest way to get to the highway, and people are going to go the other way, which means that they're gonna have a hard time getting out of that area without a signal. If there's no signal, it's going to cause a buildup there, and then you're gonna have people that are taking risky moves to get out of there. They're gonna just gun it and hope for the best, and hope no one hits them, which, that's gonna cause accidents. The next thing was going to be walkability and safety. There is no sidewalk on that side of the road for, I think, from the Shell Station on, there's no sidewalk there. And with the Heights being a large population of people that walk, I think if they're anticipating that those people are going to be utilizing that facility, there's going to have to be a sidewalk that connects to the casino, and a crosswalk that comes from the other side of the road, which has sidewalks over. Not only is there no light there, so we're having difficulties with cars, we're also not going to have accessibility and safety for pedestrians crossing from the side that has a sidewalk over to the casino and the gaming area. So, that was one thing that was really important, was more so the safety. And then, if people are going to take Old Portsmouth Road and try to cut through there, because it's going to be the easiest way to get out of that parking lot, that area is headed towards our schools. We have two, we have Millbrook and Broken Ground that are over there, and so you have a lot of school traffic. You have more kids over in that area. There's lots of sidewalks, which is fabulous, because kids are out riding their bikes or walking around. But if we have more traffic going through there, especially maybe in the evening after people have been drinking, that's more risk for the children than the residents in that area. So, not doing a signal there is going to also be putting those people at risk, even though they're a little bit further away from the establishment. The next thing I wanted to talk about was with the casino. I know a gentleman had said that it's not really the business of this board to discuss which businesses succeed or not, but the success of these businesses impacts all the residents in the city of Concord as well. That's how we get our budget, through taxes. If these companies build these buildings, and then they fail, and then we have this vacant building sitting there, not producing any taxes, that's becoming an eyesore to Concord. People don't wanna come here. That's gonna negatively impact the city, the budget, and everyone. It's a trickle-down. So, I think that it does really impact us, especially because we already have so many vacant buildings on the Heights. And while we can't make the mall do anything, because it's a privately-owned business, I would think that we would look at this business coming up, and how are they going to do as far as bringing in business and not cannibalizing the other businesses in our area? Because that also is a huge impact. I was looking through peer-reviewed research on casinos entering into the local communities, and there's not a ton of research that's been done that hasn't been funded by casinos. So, when you're looking at unbiased research, there are only a handful. And they talk about how the local market, if the casinos are getting to the local market, it generally doesn't bring in outside money into the economy, and because everyone has a certain amount of discretionary funds, they're going to take those funds that they would normally be using for local businesses, restaurants and such, and put it towards gambling. They don't automatically have more discretionary funds, because there's a new casino. And so, that's going to hurt other businesses, potentially become eyesores when they become vacant. And then, if they're saying, well, we're using this to be a destination, we want people to come here, well, what percentage of those clients are coming from out of town? There are a few algorithms that can help you determine whether it's going to be a deterrent to your city or not. The first one looks at casino plus non-local visitor spending, and it looks at leakage and displacement. So, the leakage is going to be the economic benefits that are going outside of the community to the casino, purchasing supplies out of the community. Generally, businesses, they wanna be...
Ma'am, that's not within our purview, so, I mean, we appreciate your concern.
It is because it impacts.
I know, but we do not, it's an allowed use in the district. We do not have authority to make a decision as to what the use is.
I understand that. It was more so just leading into the fact that if they are not able to stay profitable, because they're not seeking outside communities as their main source, that's going to cause discretionary funds from the local community to go down, which could lead to the company not being successful, causing more vacant buildings, and we're taking down green space, we're impacting wetlands, and potentially taking away a nicer part of Concord to put in this building that could potentially be vacant if it's not profitable.
But that's not within our purview, to determine whether or not they're going to be profitable two, five, 10, 50 years from now. It's just not something we have control over.
When assessing, making, making an exception to utilizing the wetlands, do they not take into account the viability?
No.
Okay. Can I just chirp? Excuse me. So, we do actually have the authority in the site plan regulations to request market studies, so just putting that out there.
And then, the other part is, it's really difficult in Concord right now for the residents to find housing as-is. If we're gonna be staffing this large facility, where are these staff coming from? I assume they're not coming from Concord, because we have so many local businesses that can't staff as-is. So, if we're bringing in other people, where are they gonna be housed? We're putting in these new apartments that we talked about tonight, and are those going to be for residents that are already struggling to find a place to live, or is it going to be to house these employees that are coming in to work for this casino? And it's just gonna further, kind of put us in this bad position of finding housing for the people that live in Concord. I think that's basically it. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Don't forget to sign in.
I'm signing already.
Sir?
I'm gonna make it short and sweet, because I know it's getting like the tree sign, signing wherever it is. Where's Wes signing, right here?
Yes, right.
I will. You're right about that. Yeah, good evening. My name is Tom Sedaris. I live on 34 Pine Acres Road here on Concord Heights, and I just wanna say to you folks, a casino is an extremely short-sighted solution to bringing in new revenue, especially for a very respectable and quality city like Concord. Question, and I just wanna second what just has been said a few minutes ago. Once the newness and the novelty of this proposed gambling project wears off, you know, what's Mr. Sanborn's group gonna do? They're gonna sell this, 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 this new project off to an unknown entity? And who knows what we're gonna have to be dealing with 10, 15, 20 years down the road? We've seen what's happened at the Steepo Gate Mall. Do we need another situation in that part of town? I don't think so. Gambling is a sin that goes against Judeo-Christian values. This project will only attract and bring in a bad element. Gambling also preys and takes advantage of the poor, and don't forget that. I ask the city council to be smart and take a long-term viewpoint when it comes to keeping out expanding gambling in our great city of Concord. Unfortunately, many of you who live east of the river in wards 1 through 7 have basically had, have had an attitude toward my part of town over the last 35 years I've been here, with an anything goes mentality east of the Merrimack River. And I hope, I just hope that this doesn't happen again. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First of all, you guys are gonna get a blessing for putting up with us tonight. There's just so much you can hear from negativism, and I'm not here to be negative.
Your name for the record.
My name is Carl, C-A-R-L, Nolan, N-O-L-I-N. I'm here representing several nonprofit organizations. I've been dealing with casinos in Seabrook, Nashua, Manchester, Concord, and a lot of the things that are being discussed tonight have nothing to do with the casino itself, how you get there. itself, how you get there, if the water's going to run, if this, you know. These are all jobs that some of the city should be doing. Like earlier tonight, you were talking about painting the lines in the street. Who paints the lines in the street? The service station or the city or the state? Anyway, let me get to my point. I have a Down Syndrome son. I've been here for some 40 years. When I came here, Special Olympics was something that, who gave a? I did. I gave, and I've been working on it all those years. And how do we fund that stuff? There are donations from people like you, me, everybody. But then all of a sudden, we, we get friendships with a casino. And let me tell you, I also run the American Legion baseball team, the state champions in New Hampshire last year, Concord. And those kids did not pay a cent because of funding that I got through the Legion, a nonprofit, through the casino, through donations from people in the Legion. That's two. I'm also a member of the Lions Club. You see, what I do with my retirement, I'm out there, it says stupid. And, you know, you just sit there and you, you take all this stuff and you put up with it, and you try to help the community. And that's what I do. I try to help the community by helping kids, helping adults. And the only way you do that is you get out there and you do what you can. You guys are doing what you can, and God bless you. I don't think I could do it. I'd probably stand up and, I'm the one who yet set timeout, by the way. We said five minutes. My five minutes is probably up. But I want you to know that the casino itself, Phase One, is where we're at. We're not trying to figure out where the water's going to go yet, but we're going to get there. We don't know what hotels go, we're going to get there. We don't know why the trucks and the cars are going by my house and making noise. We're going to get there. But that's my opinion. My friend Norman.
My name is Norman Roeburg. I'm with the Concord Lions Club, but I also represent other nonprofits. And that one of the items is, is that the, I know we're not talking about what the facility is going to be using it for, but the facility cannot operate without the charitable organizations. New Hampshire is unique in the way that it goes over and permits, if you want, okay, casino gambling in the state, is that a charitable organization must be the sponsor, if you want, here 10 days a year. So you have multiple organizations, if you want, that, that go over and sponsor a casino week, if you want, 10 days, so that generates funds for the organization. And then I can also say here is that since I do represent several organizations, that making random stops, again, if you want, at the existing Concord Casino, nothing out there, again, if you want, of any disparagement, okay, with the, the kids that are out there or, or young adults, basically, having fun. And they're basically, again, going over, do you have some, you know, some problems once in a while, again, here, a little more, too much drinking? Yeah, but it happens at every establishment, if you want, that has liquor. So that, that's all I have to say.
We're, we're here to support anything that will support the community. And fortunately, or unfortunately, the casino, in this case, helps the community. Not the one that hasn't been built yet, but the ones that have been built. And so I want you all to get a good feeling now, too, when you go home tonight and say, we heard somebody good and he did it within five minutes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see, they are from this side. Yes, you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Charles McGee, 22-year resident, I have signed in at 6:30 this evening. I'll be very brief. I want to speak in favor of the casino. I think it'll add some good tax revenue and some good jobs. Again, it's not material, whether it's successful or not, that's outside of your purview. In terms of the traffic, I would remind you that we had at one time a very busy mall just down the street from this that didn't cause any major traffic jams. I live in Ward 10, and I just don't see it being a problem. I full-heartedly support it. You know, these folks have to give back 35% a night of the handle. I don't know if you're familiar with the amount of dollars we're talking about, but the Manchester Casino gives back $10,000 a night. So if you are a charity with seven nights at the casino, you'll get $70,000 a year. That is life-changing to these, to these nonprofits, whether it's the League of Craftsman or In Town or whatever charity you might like. I would also strongly urge you, please, to go down to Manchester. The Manchester Casino is right off of 293, right on South Willow. We are talking about a very, very busy place, right next to the mall. And there are no traffic problems down there. In fact, I would further recommend that you look into the number of incidents down there in terms of crime and calls from the police, and you will find it's very, very minimal. Again, I appreciate your time and your, your service, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Good evening or good night.
It's going to be good morning pretty soon.
Give it a minute. My name is Jeff Smar. I founded the Smar Scholarship Fund back in 2015. We've been a registered 501(c)(3) since 2016. We got involved with the casino here in Concord with Andy and, and Lori Sanborn. And initially, very, very small, we made very little money doing this. This passed, well, since they have continually expanded and made things better, we've continued to make more money involved with it. This year, we are, already with five months left, we've already made what we did last year. It has put us into an issue where my board and I are actually thinking of new ways to help the local community and help, we actually support the ROTC over at, over at UNH. We provide two scholarships over there. We provide a couple of scholarships at Boe High School. Now we want to expand that, and this is giving us the opportunity to do that. So we found it to be very, a, a good way for us to, to do it. We've never seen, I've never seen any problems at the draft. We go in there all the time. And I'm sure there are calls, there are calls at every bar that I've ever, I've ever been to, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good morning.
Thank you.
Yes, way in the back.
Thank you, boy, for staying so late. I know what it's like. My name's Timothy Lamphier. I've resided on Loudon Road, actually, for 34 years in business. I'm actually in favor for it. I'm actually on a board for all first responders in the state of New Hampshire, and we do raise money by doing this. We've given over a half a million dollars out to recipients that needed it, whether it's fire, EMS, police as well. We've actually done a nominees award, and a couple police officers in Concord actually got it. So I think it's a good aspect that, that what we're doing here in the city, I think it'd be a good avenue to go on. I think some of the things that need to be tweaked, that you tweaked on with traffic and stuff, I built the, the Heights Courtyard on Loudon Road, which is 374 Loudon Road. You might remember it as the old Speedway back in the day. That was me for 16 and a half years there. And when I built my mall, I remember distinctively going through the planning board, zoning board, all that. And my trip count with my little strip mall, I couldn't believe it, put me almost like 12 cars away from it. Didn't make sense to me. And I'm just looking at it like going, not that it's, that he should have to pay one, but the, the counter was literally right down the street. I mean, it's changed. And we're still, what I call COVID, still, because traffic is not 100%. People are working at home now. They're not at jobs yet, they're not looking in office spaces. Things have changed a little bit, but that could be to an advantage that the way it's going to be today. So, I mean, that's basically what I have to say. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I've been on Loudon Road for a long, long time. I've seen the traffic come, I've seen it go, and I've seen it come back.
Any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for staying late again.
I'm very nervous.
It's okay. We don't bite.
I'm one of the nonprofits that benefit from the Concord Casino. And every year that we've been able to have our 10 days.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Siri Pellegrino. Sorry. And, and the 35% that we receive is really important to us doing what we do, saving dogs and having them, their medical care and finding them good homes and, and whatever else those dogs need. And occasionally, cat here and there we've taken care of. So I am, like, really hopeful that this will all get approved. And as far as people talking about gambling and whatnot, actually, I think you could go have a good time. My dad and my brother came, we, we just all put out $20. We played the game, you know, the 21 game, and for an hour and a half, we had a good time. We didn't lose a whole lot of money, we had a good time, and you can make what you want out of it, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name, thank you, sorry it's so late. My name is Tim Robson, live on Ridge Road in Concord. And I just wanted to make sure that I said something after all those people who recently spoke. I admire all their charities. I am entirely disappointed that we have this legislation that allows casinos. We are better than this. We should not be funding charities and support services that should be paid for through regular taxes through this backend mechanism of funding. And we, it, it is corrupting, it is regressive. It's a very regressive taxation system. Gambling is an awful habit to get into, and I want us all to be, to have that thought as we end this meeting. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Bernhard, and I just wanted to say that I totally agree with the woman that said you can't make a left-hand turn coming out of Old Loudon Road onto Loudon Road if you have to go down to the intersection of 106 on a Saturday morning. I've been there for 10 minutes. The traffic comes down, and anybody that says there's no traffic on Loudon Road hasn't driven down there. Because if you don't make a left-hand turn down there, you're going to do exactly what the people said. You're going to go down Old Loudon Road and join Loudon Road down there and go by all the homes and residences, or you're going to hit East Side Drive and Portsmouth Street, where there are a lot of kids and a lot of residents. So from a traffic standpoint, I didn't understand the traffic numbers that were given. I don't know how you get peak hours of 260 and then cars are 5,000. That doesn't make any sense to me. All I can tell you is that intersection is, is difficult to get through. I also just wanted to say, I don't think there has been anything, I didn't hear anything about the light pollution. I heard mixed things about the water. I don't know how you can put 300 parking spaces in all these other facilities in there and have no problem with runoff water. You're taking up all of that, all of that space with hardtop. Thank you very much, and that's all. I wanted to just repeat what people had said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else going once, going twice?
Sound like a good thing.
I am hereby ending the public hearing. Okay.
Motion to continue, correct?
That's staff's recommendation. So one thing that hasn't come up that I think was, was really significant, was really significant when, in the, in the past several weeks, and what, well, actually, what came to me through the CNHRPC report was the concerns and questions about municipal services, specifically police and fire. This is a development of regional impact. It's located very close to all those municipalities, and the, the, yes, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish.
But just, it's a concern. You know, there's been questions about police services. I spoke with the police based on those discussions to follow up. They did have concerns. If you notice in my report, I did recommend that the board invite the police chief to the meeting to hear firsthand what their concerns are and about their capacity issues.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this application to the March 15th hearing in order to allow staff time to work on the issues that have been outlined, and also that we make a request to Chief Osgood, that he or his designee appear at that meeting to give us an overview of what the police department feels is the, would be the impact of this project.
And does the board also feel that we should reach out to the adjacent municipalities to inquire about their services?
I amend my motion thusly.
And I would like to inquire, do we need to invite the fire chiefs as well, or is that less of a, I mean, it's, it's less, I guess, from a firefight perspective, in my mind, than an emergency response perspective?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, yes. I think we should be reaching out to all of them and having conversations because, because of the location of the facility, there are multiple, you know, they help each other out, so they will come from different locations. Are you opening the public hearing again? I don't think.
Not at this hour.
Yeah, we're, we're not opening the public hearing again.
Understood. We understand there's further commentary had. We're just making sure that it's understood that the applicant has reached out to those parties. That's why it took us so long to get back here, was the work with fire department to resolve those concerns.
It's Concord Fire Department, not, not other municipalities.
That the applicant is working with the police department to make sure that those concerns that they may have are resolved. So I didn't want to end on a sour note, so I apologize for speaking out of turn.
The board will need to understand all that, too, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, it's the adjacent municipalities. I think it's important that, that you hear your, it from, hear it yourselves from them.
I'd like to second Byron's motion as a mention.
Thank you. So does your motion include the fire? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
My computer died. My computer died.